Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Immigration, joined with the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. At this time, we would like you to place all electronic devices to vibrate. If you wish to submit testimony today, you could do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you wish to submit in-person testimony, you need to fill out an appearance card by the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. If you need translation device, please contact a Sergeant-at-Arms. Please do not approach the dais. I repeat, do not approach the dais.
Buenos dias and bienvenidos a la reunion del Consilio de la Ciudad de Nueva York en el día de hoy para el Comité de Inmigración en conjunto con Protección de Consumidor y Trabajador. En este momento, por favor, silencen sus teléfonos celulares y cualquier dispositivo electrónico para minimizar disruptions o interrupciones a lo largo de la audiencia. Si usted desea testificar, por favor, llene una forma o un formulario para testigos con el Sargento en Armas o los oficiales en armas que están en la parte de atrás. Si usted tiene testimonio que desea entregar para el acta, usted lo puede hacer a través de correo electrónico en esta dirección: Testimony@council@nyc.gov. Disculpen. Una vez más, lo pueden entregar a testimony@council@nyc.gov. Si usted requiere o necesita un dispositivo de traducción o interpretación, por favor, acérquese al Sargento en Armas para que le ayuden con eso. En cualquier momento, a lo largo de estudiencia, no se acerque al estrado. Gracias por su cooperación.
Bonjour tout le monde. Bienvenue dans le comité ça qui organise aujourd'hui par la ville de New York et comité ça abstentieux aujourd'hui à sous immigration notamment sous consommateurs avec protection de travailleurs. Non tant ça côté audience la pour elle commencer. Nous demandez nous pour qu'un be téléphone nous sous silence avec tout appareil électronique New York afin que audience l'empare perturbé. Le fini si nous besoin témoigner alors pas blier que nous capable rapprocher auprès de agents sécurité yo qui à travers pot ça yo pour capable ban nous accès pour nous car témoigner. Pas blier tout que nous capable témoigner à travers internet. Nous capable taper testimony@concile.nyc.gov pour nous capable amener tête témoignage nous sous internet. Le fini pas blier que traduction ça yo que nous guerre. Nous guerre en Haitien Creole, nous guerre en Mandarin, le fini nous guerre en Espagnol. Le fini pas blier que encore une fois font qu'un be téléphone nous avec notre device nous. Non mode silencieux et puis pendant audience l'ap parler. Reté très loin par rapprocher de mon lieu cap palé a tant que toute bagaille fini avant que nous poser question. Mais si on pile.
Chair, we're ready to begin?
This meeting is called to order. Good morning, everyone. I am Councilmember Alex Aviles, Chair of the Committee on Immigration. Thank you for joining us. Today, we will be exploring how the city is combating immigration services fraud. I'd like to thank Councilmember Julie Menon, Chair of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, for co-chairing this important hearing. I'd also like to thank the representatives of the administration, members of the public, and my committee colleagues. Please note, we have interpretation available in Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Mandarin. If you are in the council chambers today and interested in listening to this hearing in Spanish, Haitian Creole, or Mandarin, there are headsets available in the rotunda. If you would like to testify and require interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, or Mandarin, please indicate on your witness slip form or inform the sergeant if you have already submitted your slip. As is becoming a tradition, I'd like to begin our hearing by reminding everyone that New York City has always been and will always be a city of immigrants. In fact, according to the most recent annual report of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, immigrants and children of immigrants make up 60% of the New York City population. This number does not even begin to include those who are neighbors with, friends with, or in community with an immigrant. This city is special because of the people who live here, and we must continue to stand up against bullying threats to our community. In today's hearing, we will hear from the administration about their efforts to prevent immigration services fraud and support fraud victims. Over the past year, complaints of immigration services fraud in New York have increased, and advocates have consistently been ringing the alarm on these growing threats. Oftentimes, immigration services fraud becomes more rampant in periods where demand for legal services increases. This could be because of increased immigration or because of immigration legal landscape has become so much more complicated. There is increasing significant concern around fraud that will occur as access to immigration benefits is destroyed by this current presidential administration. The Trump administration has decimated immigration relief for numerous parolees and temporary protected status recipients, and is clearly uninterested in stopping this destruction anytime soon. The Trump administration is complicating access to work permits, threatening green card holders, making immigrants scared to pay their taxes, to go to the doctor, to take their children to school, and to access critical services. The people whose lives are catastrophically changed by this draconian decision-making from our current president are likely to become desperate to find ways to protect themselves or their families from deportation. Unscrupulous actors prey upon this desperation, and immigrants can find themselves overcharged, lied to, and in some instances have their immigration cases irreparably damaged by fraudulent providers. In some cases, fraud may also be more subtle. The complexity of immigration law often requires support from a professional attorney, and in New York, there are a lot of requirements that service providers must follow to ensure that they do not overstep their jurisdictions and provide legal advice. The provision of specific legal information and defense must be in the form of a professional lawyer, because without this expertise, immigration cases could be filed improperly and cause significant issues. I've just covered some of what this hearing will be about, and I will now take a moment to describe what this hearing is not about: a wholesale attack on our city's bona fide legal service providers. The president recently issued an executive order purporting to target immigration lawyers with additional scrutiny and legal sanctions in retaliation for lawsuits filed against their administration. Let me make one thing abundantly clear: this council stands with organizations and providers who offer expert legal assistance and compassionate wraparound services to our immigrant community members and their families. In fact, immigrant-serving organizations are some of the only institutions standing in the breach as ICE disappears community members from our neighborhoods. The council has a proud history funding these experienced and courageous providers of immigration services and will continue to do so in the months and years to come. This hearing will examine the city's efforts to connect individuals to seeking immigration services with those bona fide providers and help them steer clear of the unaccredited ones. The city must ensure that immigrants are accessing proper professional legal services and not let astray by unscrupulous actors or non-legal service providers. The city must also ensure that immigrants who are victims of fraud are able to submit a complaint and find some resource that relieves them for some of the damages that incur. We look forward to hearing from the administration on how they are informing, empowering, and protecting our immigrant communities. At the council's last hearing on this topic in 2021, the committee heard from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection and the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. I'm grateful that DCWP will testify today and look forward to hearing their testimony. I'm disappointed, however, that Moya has elected not to attend today's important hearing. It is a shame that the public will not be able to hear Moya share their work, their office is doing to combat immigrant services fraud. I understand that Moya will be submitting written testimony, and I look forward to following up with them with questions. Lastly, the Committee on Immigration will hear Councilmember Wong's bill, Introduction 980, which increases penalties for violations of requirements that apply to immigration services. I look forward to hearing more from Councilmember Wong on this bill and her support as we seek to improve the services provided to immigrants. I would like to thank all the committee staff for their work on this hearing, including Nicole Kata, Senior Legislative Council, Rebecca Barilla, Policy Analyst, Carolina Gill, Principal Capital Analyst, and Florentine Cabor, Unit Head. I would also like to thank the Council's Oversight and Investigations Division for their support, including Meg Powers, Acting Deputy Director, Zachary Mayer-Casallas, Assistant Deputy Director, Katie Sinis, Investigative Policy Analyst. And finally, I have to thank my staff: Chief of Staff Edward Cerna, Deputy Chief of Staff Christina Botego, and Legislative Fellow Kate Byrne, and everyone working in the background to make this hearing run smoothly. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Menon for her opening statement.
Thank you so much, Chair Aviles. I'm Julie Menon, Chair of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, and we want to welcome you to today's joint hearing on combating immigration services fraud as well as a hearing on Introduction numbers 205 and 980. When I previously served as Commissioner of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, President Obama had announced a series of broad administrative reforms to the immigration system. This unfortunately created new opportunities for fraudsters looking to profit from immigrant vulnerability. At that time, in response to the increased risk for immigrant New Yorkers, I co-led a task force in partnership with the Office of the New York Attorney General and the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs that dedicated increased enforcement resources and conducted a public awareness campaign to stop predators from taking advantage of our immigrant communities. Once again, recent rapid changes in federal immigration and enforcement policy have created unfortunately a ripe environment for immigration services fraud, and comprehensive action by the city is absolutely necessary to combat this increase in vulnerability for immigrant New Yorkers. At today's hearing, we look forward to learning more about the administration's work to educate and protect New Yorkers from immigration services fraud and to enforce laws that regulate the behavior of immigration service providers. The Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection will also be hearing feedback on Introduction number 205, sponsored by Councilmember Hanif. In closing, I want to thank our committee staff and my staff for their hard work in putting together today's hearing and my colleague, Councilmember Aviles, for all of her hard work in making today happen. I want to first of all recognize our colleagues who have joined: Councilmember Abreu, Councilmember Brewer, and we will acknowledge additional colleagues as they come in. And I'm now going to turn it over to the public advocate to make a statement.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. My name is Jermaine Williams. I mention the Public Advocate of the City of New York. Thank you, Chairs Menon and Aviles, for holding today's hearing and allowing me opportunity to provide a brief statement. These are pretty dire times for many New York communities, including our immigrant communities. The mayor has officially begun saluting Kristi Noem and ICE in public. While we must continue to condemn the mayor for his inability to put the safety of New Yorkers over himself, we must be laser-focused on what this means for our communities. It has now been confirmed that the mayor engaged in quid pro quo, a fact that was confirmed by the judge in his dismissal, a fact that the mayor continues to lie by through omission. And his new platform puts all of us in danger and none more than our newest New Yorkers and immigrants who are afraid. I now believe that the mayor believed there wasn't a quid pro quo because he believes in Donald Trump and his MAGA agenda and believes if he was going to do it anyway, it's not a quid pro quo. It is, and we're all suffering from it. History is not going to be kind to the Trump administration's MAGA policies. History won't be kind to the disgrace of Mayor Adams and his Adams administration. The byproduct of many of his decisions is an environment that allows fear and disinformation to spread like wildfire throughout our city. An environment such as this opens a gap in our society where scams, fraudsters, and bad faith actors can take advantage of the most vulnerable New Yorkers. These actors must be stopped, penalized, and held accountable for violations of law and decency. One such actor impersonated a number of federal law enforcement agents and demanded huge sums of money in exchange for expedited visa applications. Another culprit pales as an attorney and solicited bribes from individuals seeking legal pathways toward citizenship. Make no mistake, increase in these kinds of scams and scammers, which have always been here, are a result of the president and the mayor's dual efforts to criminalize and obscure the legal immigration process. It is crucial that elected officials and advocates make every effort to educate our constituents on these scams and prosecute those who think they can profit from exploiting on already broken system. Every New Yorker deserves the opportunity to be a part of our great city. I'll continue to stand by my colleagues and the advocates on the ground in order to protect the rights and opportunities that we are entitled to. We will not back down in the face of this corruption, exploitation, and disinformation. I want to thank the legal services and many of the service providers who continue to do the best they can in some very tough situations. I am worried that the mayor doesn't really care about what's happening and the harm that's being caused, and I don't think New Yorkers can look to him for leadership. But I am asking those who are in agencies, who are in charge of agencies, who are working in agencies, who know what the right thing is to do, to do the best they can with what they have, where they are, in tough situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Public Advocate Williams. Thank you for your steadfast advocacy and support of immigrant New Yorkers and your leadership. I guess now with that, we will turn it over to the Committee Council to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chairs. We will now hear from the administration. We will hear from the Commissioner of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, Vilda Vera Mayuga; Assistant Commissioner of External Affairs, Carlos Ortiz; and General Counsel, Michael Tiger. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you for the beautiful pronunciation, by the way. That's really nice. So, good morning, Chair Menon, Chair Aviles, and members of the public advocate and members of the committees. My name is Vilda Vera Mayuga, Commissioner of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, DCWP. Today, I am joined by our General Counsel, Michael Tiger, and Assistant Commissioner of External Affairs, Carlos Ortiz. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on immigration services fraud and related legislation as we continue our shared mission to protect immigrant New Yorkers from harm and exploitation. DCWP is a key resource for all New Yorkers, providing fundamental consumer and worker protections and financial empowerment programming across the five boroughs. We are dedicated to ensuring that consumers who have been exploited or deceived have a recourse, that workers have a passionate defender of their rights, and that all New Yorkers have the opportunity, the support they need, to improve their financial health. All of these protections and resources are available to New Yorkers regardless of immigration status. In the past three years, we have helped deliver more than $1.3 billion back to New Yorkers through debt relief efforts, restitution, and financial empowerment programming. In New York City, DCWP protects immigrant consumers in several ways using our broad consumer protection powers. This includes laws and rules we enforce regarding immigration service providers, which are businesses that charge fees for any kind of immigration-related service. DCWP also licenses employment agencies, which are businesses that provide job search assistance for a fee. Lastly, we use our signature consumer protection law, which applies to all businesses in New York City, to prohibit deceptive and unconscionable business practices against New Yorkers. Immigration service providers are not lawyers, and there are prohibitions and limits to the types of services they can provide to consumers seeking immigration-related assistance. We have also found employment agencies to similarly target immigrant communities and individuals. DCWP conducts enforcement of immigration service providers and employment agencies through field inspections and attorney-led investigations that lead to actions before the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings or State Court. Fraudulent immigration service providers and employment agencies remain an ongoing challenge for us due to their flight-by-night nature. Many operate out of temporary storefronts, private residences, instant messaging apps, or online platforms only to disappear after being paid by a consumer. Additionally, due to fear of government interaction, immigrant communities often hesitate to file complaints, which are essential to an investigatory process. Regardless, DCWP continues to use its civil enforcement authority where and when we can to hold unscrupulous businesses accountable, to educate New Yorkers on their rights, and to encourage consumers to come to us when those rights have been exploited. In 2025, we have escalated efforts to better support immigrant communities in light of recent events. For example, last month, I convened a roundtable of community leaders and legal advocates to discuss and identify emerging trends of consumer harm and ways to strengthen our collaboration to support New Yorkers. We have also engaged with each of the city's district's attorney's offices and the New York State Attorney General's office to establish sustainable partnerships and reduce duplicative efforts, improve information sharing, and better our inter-agency coordination. Recently, our field enforcement team conducted proactive inspections of business advertising themselves as immigration service providers as well as employment agencies. In the past two months, the team conducted over 750 inspections, resulting in almost 80 summonses. We have also stepped up our investigations, including major results against immigration service providers and employment agencies, such as $100,000 in penalties against Horizonte de Esperanza Corp. and a trial decision of $1.6 million with significant consumer restitution against CMP employment for illegal activity targeting immigrants. Lastly, under our consumer protection law, we investigated ASA College after receiving photographs of false and deceptive advertisements the for-profit school was using in New York City subways. These advertisements were clearly targeted to immigrants with promises of assistance in obtaining certain visas if one were enrolled at the school. Our efforts resulted in a settlement agreement with ASA, ultimately putting it out of business and stopping further harm to immigrant students. As I mentioned to the committees before, we always want to ensure that our enforcement is paired with education so that we are empowering consumers with the information they need to protect themselves on the front end. For example, we are currently running a digital education campaign across social media platforms to highlight and educate New Yorkers on their protections related to immigration service providers. Last week, we coordinated a citywide day of action mobilizing volunteers across the boroughs to distribute educational materials connecting with over 5,500 New Yorkers and ensuring that they are aware of their rights under our laws. This builds on our efforts over the past three years, conducting nearly 600 immigrant-focused outreach events to 63,000 New Yorkers on the protections and services we offer regardless of immigration status. Turning to today's legislation, Introduction 205 would require DCWP to conduct outreach, education, and advertising about fraudulent schemes committed by immigration service providers and how to avoid them. The advertisement requirements include television, internet, radio, print, subway, and Link NYC kiosk. The legislation would also require the agency to report annually on its outreach and advertising efforts. We support the intent of this bill and are committed to sustainable interventions to help New Yorkers avoid common fraudulent schemes. However, we have concerns with the overly burdensome advertising mandates, which would require significant new resources. We look forward to working with council on this legislation and ensuring that New Yorkers are equipped to avoid fraudulent schemes by bad actors. Next, Introduction 980 would increase civil penalties for immigration service providers for violations of DCWP's laws and rules. We support Introduction 980 and look forward to working with all of you on this bill. I would like to reiterate that DCWP's protections and resources are available to all New Yorkers regardless of immigration status. Especially as it relates to the issues we are discussing today, we encourage anyone who has been harmed by fraud or misrepresentations to please contact our agency so we can get to work assisting you. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify in today's bills and our essential work uplifting all New Yorkers. We look forward to our continued partnership with all of you to protect our city's residents, and I welcome any questions you may have for further discussion.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner. So we'll just jump into the questions. So what are the primary types of immigration services fraud that you are seeing? And are there types of fraud or schemes that target particular immigrant communities?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think generally, it repeats, the patterns sort of repeat in terms of what is offered, and it could be people pretending to be attorneys. We know that the reliance on the word notario, particularly for the Spanish-speaking countries, right? Where you have to be an attorney to really be a notary, and it's not the reality in the U.S. And so that people will follow that. Charging for forms, you know, that are otherwise free from the government directly, and basically providing immigration advice that it's, obviously, we know it can be so dangerous for somebody who is not an expert and professional, duly certified, to provide that advice.
I, sorry. One thing I wanted to add to, what I've been hearing a lot recently, is folks who engage with immigration service providers that claim to have special relationships with the government that seem to make promises they can't keep, for example, and that leads immigrant consumers down a path that is dangerous for their status.
And the immigrant consumers don't know what's been submitted, if anything. So there's a lack of clarity from the immigrant about whether something was submitted and what exactly documentation, and also getting documentation back that they submitted to the provider.
Right, and in your testimony, you also noted social media, the use of WhatsApp and WeChat, which we see as a significant proliferator of fraudulent scams. We'll talk more about that later. But so how does DCWP investigate fraud that is rampant in a specific immigrant community, such as the fraud on WhatsApp or WeChat?
Right, no, thank you. So I mean, like I said right in my testimony, we're part of the work that we do that is for everybody regardless of immigration status. So I think we have different cases that we've done that may not be specifically about immigration services but have a focus on the immigrant community. I give the example of ASA College that basically was promising regularizing your immigration status simply by becoming a student at that institution. We have other cases that, again, that they just will target the immigrant community because they feel they might not be as knowledgeable about their rights. So that is something that we do see. But generally, when somebody files a complaint, we will definitely be looking at it. In the case specific of immigration service providers, our consumer services unit will definitely flag it for our attorneys because we recognize that this type of industry requires a different approach than trying to contact a business and try to mediate because then they're just going to disappear. Once they obtain people's money, they might engage them a little longer, but once they find out that a government agency is looking into them, they might disappear. So we make a little bit of a different assessment and take a different approach with that industry by having an attorney's review and determine if, you know, what information, additional information we may need for a complaining to get more data and be able to decide on the next steps. And General Counsel oversees that unit. Is there anything else to add?
No, I think you covered. No, I think you covered sort of how we handle in a general sense.
Okay. And then for something such as where it's happening on social media, whether is it necessary, well, I guess there's an entity behind an account, but not necessarily a brick-and-mortar entity. How does the agency handle that type of investigation?
It's gonna depend, I mean, we would, we rely a lot, obviously, on the consumers that are giving us the information on any more details that may help us identify the individual behind the account. I think it's important to stress that, you know, we recognize how difficult it could be for an individual to come forward and report an issue that's happening where they feel that they've been targeted and scammed. And we do want people to know that it doesn't have to be the individual to file the complaint either. It could also be a friend or a relative, a community-based organization could bridge that gap with us to provide the information if there's fear. But when it comes to, yeah, using WhatsApp, it is a challenge that we encounter. We're still going to be depending on information coming from the complainant.
I think to, to, sorry, to add into that point, you know, the industry, the industry of immigration providers historically has had challenges because of its fly-by-night aspect. I think WeChat and WhatsApp, social media, only exacerbate that issue. And part of the communication we do on the education side is very, is very much focused on preventative measures, ensuring that you're going to a brick-and-mortar business, ensuring that a business has proper surety bond signage up, ensuring that you're receiving contracts, that they're not taking your originals. These preventative measures to ensure that you're not falling into a deception from a business operating off of WhatsApp.
However, so, so obviously, these types of, these types of crimes, right, are very particular and do require some very particular expertise. Does DCWP, I'm gonna say this wrong at least 10 times, forgive me, does, does the agency have in-house capacity to investigate cyber crimes, or how does one, how does the agency engage in that type of investigation?
Thank you. I'm really glad you brought that up, because it's certainly, right, and we don't do criminal investigations. We're a civil enforcement agency, and that is also one of the reasons why we have the relationships, right, of establishing connections with the Attorney General's Office, or, you know, the district attorney's offices, because there are some aspects of this industry that, depending on the case, are definitely going to be better suited for a criminal investigation or agencies that have certain powers that we don't have, just based on being a civil enforcement agency.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think, a reality, but that's why, as the Commissioner has said, we're doubling our efforts to have information sharing with the district attorney's office, with the Attorney General's office. And I think it's still important for complaints to be made, because even if we can't handle it directly, or we determine that we are not the agency best in a place to help this individual consumer or pursue this individual investigation, we have contacts at different offices across the five boroughs, and we can talk to them and figure out what's the best approach overall, marshaling all of the city's resources to move forward.
So for, so in this instance, again, I guess, just last week, I had a case in my office where someone sent $1,500 to a person on WhatsApp, because it was recommended by a neighbor that this was a speedy way to get their immigration services bumped up. He sent his entire life savings to an unknown entity. What happens, can you walk me through how DCWP handles this case?
So, thank you for that question. And again, I want to reiterate something that the Commissioner said, that if, for example, the consumer doesn't want to come forward, a family member, an advocate can come forward on their behalf. And I think the important part is having some sort of contact information that we can continue a conversation to understand the facts. So if we got that type of complaint, we would review it. As the Commissioner said, all immigration service provider complaints that come in through our Consumer Services Unit now go directly to a lawyer for review, and that lawyer will look at, see if there's some, it's connected to a brick-and-mortar location, or if there's any contact info with a person that we can identify, and we can do, we can do research to see what we know about that individual, whether there are any aliases. But ultimately, if we think it goes beyond what, what we can reach, whether we think it's criminal, maybe it been, maybe the person who is holding the WhatsApp account is not even in this country.
Yeah.
And that's why, as I said, we're redoubling our efforts to talk to district attorney's offices, who might be better resourced and might have jurisdictional authority that might be better used to approach some of those cases. But in the first instance, it will go to a lawyer, we'll look at, and we'll see what we can do based on the laws that we have, and we'll make a determination about whether this is something that we can pursue, or whether there are different actors within the regulatory space in New York City who might be better positioned to take the lead on it.
So how much of those kinds of cases are referred out for next step to handle?
I don't think I have those numbers right here for you right now. And honestly, what we want to do, and one of the reasons we're happy to be here today is just to, for you, for the council members and individual members, to hear from us that to talk to people in your community, talk to your organizations, so they can go and make complaints to us, because we're not getting hundreds and hundreds, 100 complaints, even though we know the harm is out there. And it's important that we hear from you, and we hear from organizations, and we hear from stakeholders, and make complaints to our, through our portal, our consumer complaint portal, which is used for all the consumer protection complaints. You can make a complaint there. Again, it doesn't have to be the individual, it can be a family member, it can be an advocate, but it's very important that we all work together to get the facts on the ground so we can make those assessments.
I think, if I may add, Chair Aviles, it's part of why it's important, right, Introduction 205, which is all about outreach and increasing the ways that we reach individuals, because I, I mean, I'm proud of the work that we've done. I'm not gonna tell you not, right? I mean, we do get out there, we partner with all of your offices, we partner with some of the organizations that are even here today, and it's about getting the word out, because unfortunately, in the case of your constituent, they're probably not gonna get their money, and you're right, this is their life savings. I, I mean, back when I was at the Attorney General's Office in 2010, I think it was I was there, similar situations, and it's heartbreaking, obviously, to meet with these individuals and tell them, "Thank you for coming and telling me about this. Let's try to stop the conduct, but I don't know if I can get you the money back."
Yeah.
Because it's, it is the nature of the business, the fly-by-night, they disappear, they're gone, you can't track them anymore. And, you know, obviously, the hope is that through more outreach that we'll continue doing and strengthening by, by things, some of the things that are in Intro 205, and just more partnership, we continue to get the word out and individuals, right, that, like you said, a neighbor said, I mean, I joked other times, I think other humans, that my mom will get her advice from her salon, right? And it's just like, oh my gosh, your daughter's a commissioner. But things like that, right, where you, you really want to get, who's the trusted voice? Who is the trusted voice where people are getting the information? How do we convince them to come to us or report on behalf of someone else, so that then we can have more information to do the enforcement to the extent that we can, or partner with others that may have other tools that we don't have?
Yeah, I guess 100%. I think we are clear and hold consensus that preventative engagement is critical. However, it does beg a question around how the city is building its apparatus. If it understands that, let's say, people are bringing, are victims of fraud through social media, it begs the question, how are we building our apparatus to be able to track that and combat that? And so I guess what I'm not entirely hearing is how the agency is building its own capacity to be able either to investigate and/or address that side of it, and maybe that's not your role in particular, but we know cybercrime is probably higher than maybe almost any other crime. So what I'm curious to understand is how the agency is earnestly addressing, building its own capacity to be able to support people and/or the city engage in as much prevention and response to the crimes. So in terms of, just really quickly, and I'll pass it over to my co-chair here, have there been any types of changes and/or frequency of immigration service fraud since the November presidential election or inauguration? Have you seen any changes?
I think we've only received a complaint so far this year in 2025, so we haven't seen an uptick, or at least not yet. We have received 48 this year regarding employment agencies, that sometimes we've seen them trying to offer their services under the guise of trying to find somebody a job. We'll continue to, obviously, monitor, and it's one of the things that has complaints come in, and we get the word out. Anecdotally, what we hear, we can see what trends, but, but so far, it has not been a big jump on complaints.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
I would say, on the, when the day of action that we held, I think it was last week, at 10 locations across the city, we, people in the streets, our folks in the community, they were definitely receptive and wanted to talk with our, with our volunteers about this issue, immigration service providers in particular. We were able to distribute information 10, 11 languages. So within that context, I think there was definitely, there was definitely questions to the community, and I think, again, to the Commissioner's point, why we are supportive of Intro 205, albeit it would require new resources, why Intro 982 is a good approach as well to addressing higher penalties for illegal activity. So, yeah, definitely, anecdotally, I could say, it was, it was definitely some good feedback from the community.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, I think it's, from my perspective, there has been a clear uptick in fraud in communities. I think unfortunately, what we're also seeing is a clear distrust of the, or of not knowing the local apparatus. Where do you go for help? And not wholly trusting in that as well. So I think we have a double-edged challenge as a city.
I agree, and, you know, I think for us, the work of the agency and the successes that we've been able to bring, New Yorkers that have been able to come to us is, is something we're very proud of, and, but spreading the word of the name Department of Consumer Work Protection is part of, part of my, my guess, bailiwick, and what I want to work on more and more, because I do think once folks do get to, to Mike's team, or to our Office of Labor Policy Standards, or to Office of Financial Empowerment, I do think that they have really strong outcomes coming out of them.
So, thank you. I'd like to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you so much. Number of questions, but I just want to start with the fact that Moya is not here. I just, you know, as you were testifying and we're talking about such an important issue, it just strikes me as appalling and unbelievable that the city agency that is charged with working with our immigrant communities is not here. And I have to say, as someone who has led three city agencies, I cannot recall a single time during my tenure as Commissioner that either myself or other fellow commissioners wouldn't, simply wouldn't come to a hearing, the fact that the whole agency is not here. And I know you're here, and we so appreciate that, so it's not, it is just more, we have to say on the record how appalling it is that the agency that is charged with working with our immigrant communities is failing to show up on such an important issue. And honestly, it's a slap in the face, not only to the city council, but to immigrants all across New York City. So with that said, and we can't really have a full-some hearing, you know, we just, we really can't. We're working, obviously, on the work, the important work that you all do as an agency, but not having Moya here is, is really shocking. In terms of enforcement strategy, I know you talked a little bit in your testimony about the enforcement strategy that you're doing. Can you distinguish between how much of it is proactive as opposed to responsive to complaints?
Of course. Thank you, Councilmember. Certainly, most of it, I mean, we've done a big push for proactive investigation combined between immigration service providers, businesses that we've identified, and employment agency, we've done 750, by identifying, doing our own research, and identifying places that either advertise as such, or our inspectors have observed doing, doing, when they're doing their work. If there is a complaint, of course, we can take a look, but those, usually, when they come in, we're gonna be doing what General Counsel Mike Tiger was explaining, to make sure that we run them by an attorney, so we don't scare away a business that we want to pursue. But most of the ones we've done recently have been proactive investigations by identifying the places and going out and finding them and issue, I think we've issued about 80 summonses as a result of those.
And your, in your testimony, you talked about the enforcement you've done in the past two months. Can you talk in a broader sense about how many inspections of immigration service providers the agency has done annually since 2022?
Thank you, Councilmembers. So going backwards, since 2022, we've done over 600 inspection of ISPs. We did not conduct any in 2022. We did 44 in 2023, 32 in 2024, and 541 this year.
And how many inspectors do you have?
We have an active headcount of 87 in our enforcement division that does include also our operations and admin folks, but I would say about 32 are actively out there on this and other issues, since some are specific to tobacco enforcement or petroleum inspections.
I would just note that about 18 of those 87 have been assigned to other operations, the Sheriff's Task Force, for example, or the Mayor's Office of Assessments.
And how are you receiving the complaints about immigration services fraud? And how would you say the complaints are then being addressed? If you could talk about the sequencing.
I'm so sorry. Can you repeat that?
Oh, sure. So how are you receiving the complaints about immigration services fraud? I know, obviously, the portal and other ways, but if you could talk specifically about how you're receiving these complaints?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, so like you mentioned, the portal is one way, and then sometimes we get them through a community-based organization or a council member's office. Councilmember One, for example, worked really hard in actually helping us identify, I think, they sell flyers advertising an immigration service provided on Roosevelt Avenue, and that is the case that we actually did resolve last year for $100,000 in penalties. Unfortunately, we didn't have complainants or individuals come forward that we could get restitution for, but we did resolve at least that case. So that's one example that came from a council member's office.
How many languages is a portal in?
Is a portal in?
Yeah, in other words, I'm concerned about language access, and I just want to understand that element of it.
It can be in any language. It can be translated into any of the languages for people to use it, so it's friendly in that, in that way.
So there are no barriers, you feel, in terms of language access?
No, absolutely not. Even, I mean, in education, we have a people in our outreach team that speaks a languages other than English, for example, also to counter that with our education. But, yeah, in terms of complaints coming in, I don't, I don't see a barrier for people to do it in a language where they're comfortable.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, though, that there's no barrier, of course, to the portal. I would, you know, there's, there's still tech issue, I mean, people having to use technology, for example, which is why we want to diversify the mechanisms of how we get complaints, whether that's the portal, of course, which has been driving more complaints to us naturally, but also 301, in-person meetings, we are very accessible with direct phone numbers that lead to our staff, and direct emails lead to our staff. So I think these are all techniques to make sure that we get the complaints in and that we're addressing where people might have troubles with accessing government.
Yeah, I'm concerned, because we all know, in this climate, people are not going to go onto the portal and report this. So what other ways is the agency working to try to address that issue and get over the distrust, the mistrust of government?
100%. And that's why we were mentioning before that one of the ways is like, it doesn't have to be the individual, right? It could be a relative, it could be a friend, it could be a community-based organization, it could be a council member, it could be over the phone, it could be, you know, an email, there's different ways. It could be anonymous. Obviously, the challenge with an anonymous complaint is that we can't have that interaction with a complainant to get more follow-up questions answered that would assist in developing our investigation, but it is, you know, anybody can file it on behalf of an individual and not identify that individual, or at least not immediately. If we need more information, we'll engage in that, back and forth, to see what we can get, and getting the comfort level, you know, up to be high enough for the individuals whose impact, so that we can help them. It is very stressful. I often say, you know, it's easy for me to say, "Please come, we'll help you," but I'm not the one going through it, so I don't, we don't take it lightly that it is a big challenge for people to overcome and just even take that first step. So So, sometimes, for example, when you go to the portal, for, in the case of worker protection, for example, people can just ask a question. Perhaps you don't want to really file a complaint yet, you just have a question. So, we're going to figure out whatever ways, it's part of, I think, what we're here today to continue finding, you know, ways to improve what we do and how we do it. And that's what we held a roundtable like a couple of weeks ago, with also those in this space, so that we could get that feedback. It's like, how can we make sure that people really come to us and tell us, so that we can do our best to stop the illegal behavior?
I would say, also on the outreach side, just to jump in quickly, Chair, I'm sorry, that in the past three years, we've done about 2,000 outreach events. I would say 600 of those were with audiences or subject matter that directly pertained or had an immigrant focus. I think I've, for me, it's incredibly essential that the agency maintains relationships with community-based organizations. That leverages our resources appropriately to reach into communities that otherwise wouldn't have access to us. It is an ongoing project, as the Commissioner maintained, and we always have to reinvigorate those relationships, but it's something that we're committed to doing and sustaining.
I mean, one recommendation would be to work with sister agencies, DOE, HRA, where there's going to be a lot of touchpoints and making sure you're doing a robust advertising campaign that, again, is disseminated through those sister agencies, I think would be really important to do. A question about Oath. So, I know the number of complaints regarding immigration service providers has increased from 2022 to 2023 and 2024, but the number of cases at Oath has not increased. There were just four such cases in 2023 and 2024 combined. What accounts for that difference?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, the number of complaints that you're seeing in the, sort of, that data set that reflects any complaint with any amount of information that's come into the portal. Unfortunately, often we see that there is threadbare information, that's why we want to sort of continue to build trust, so we continue to have ongoing conversations. But, it is a challenge that we face, that sometimes the complaints come in through the portal or through 311 without sufficient information. Or, again, another one of the systemic challenges that we and other regulators face, is the fly-by-night operations of many of these, many of, many of these businesses. And so, sometimes we'll begin an investigation, and then by the time we are, a lawyer's engaging and drafting a summons, there's no one to serve anymore. And that's a real challenge, it's not just us. But, that, from year to year, that can affect the number of summonses we actually file.
Okay. I have more questions, but I now want to turn it over to my colleagues. I know Councilmember Hanif was going to make an opening statement, I believe?
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone, good morning. I'm Councilmember Shaana Hanif. Thank you to Chairs Aviles and Menon for holding today's important hearing and for including my Intro 205 on the agenda. I'd also like to thank Chair Aviles and Councilmembers Narcisse, Ung, Marte, Krishnan, Lee for including, introducing this bill alongside me. I'm the proud daughter of two Bangladeshi immigrants, and I was raised in Kensington, in Brooklyn's Little Bangladesh. And I now have the privilege of representing my community as a councilmember for the 39th District. When I was a child, my parents weren't yet citizens, and I know from my upbringing that when you have precarious immigration status, there is an ever-present sense of anxiety. My parents were living typical Brooklyn lives, working, raising children, and making friends in their new community. But, at the same time, they were fearful that everything could be stripped away in seconds. This is an experience all too familiar to immigrant New Yorkers, arriving in a new place where you may not speak the language, may not understand the local laws, and are simply trying to build a life and stay in the place you now call home. This is where immigrant legal service fraudsters thrive. These bad actors, who are oftentimes not lawyers, prey on New Yorkers by charging high fees for bad services that may actually harm their immigration cases. What is even more frustrating is that city agencies and our network of contracted nonprofit organizations can often provide these needed services for free or at low cost. For immigrants who are often living paycheck to paycheck, falling victim to fraud can be financially devastating. I was driven to introduce this bill after speaking with a recently arrived asylum seeker at a Key to the City event in my district, who told me about the toll that fraud took on her family. This longstanding issue has become even worse following the recent increased volume of new arrivals. The city's Department of Consumer and Worker Protection describes the number of complaints on this issue as at an all-time high, and the newly established State Office of New Americans also describes an uptick. I'm grateful that DCWP is conducting outreach and education about fraudulent schemes committed by providers of immigration legal services, including through their Consumer Bill of Rights regarding immigration assistance service providers. Intro 205 would strengthen this work by requiring outreach to include information about common fraudulent schemes, and how to avoid them, and to be conducted through specific media, including television, the internet, radio, print, subway advertisements, and link NYC kiosks. Outreach materials would also be distributed in public places. The bill would also require the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to report annually on its outreach and education efforts. I urge my colleagues to join this bill as a sponsor, and I look forward to the continued question and testimonies here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanif. Councilmember Rur, would you like to ask your questions?
Thank you very much. I chaired the Oversight and Investigations Committee, and there's a division there, wonderful investigators and attorneys. And they conducted observations in five Queens business advertising immigration-related services, mostly offering immigration services as part of a separate business. And they found non-compliance with city law in all five businesses, all things included, not posting the mandated signage, disclaimers, fee schedules, all wrong. And at least one business has advertised it as an immigration consultant, which is absolutely prohibited by law. What is, what's, how can you handle, obviously, this is probably very prevalent. How do you handle something like this?
Well, I think part of the partnerships that we always seek is things like this. Obviously, if anybody observes this kind of conduct, we want them to reach out to us so that we can check if it's, you know, work that, you know, we've already looked at these businesses, or warrants another visit, and we can proceed with summonses and, and all of that. So, we are constantly just, again, the proactive investigations and the, sorry, the proactive inspections that I was mentioning that we're trying to do, not just by checking for places online that may be advertising as immigration service providers, but also as our inspectors are out conducting inspections of other businesses, if they identify one that falls in this category, to also look and make sure that they visit and enter and address any issues that they observe.
I think in general, our practice for inspectors is they go in and they will have a checklist that they work off of that verifies compliance with the law. If they observe any particular violations, they will issue a summons, and that summons will be adjudicated by a judge at Oath. It's possible that these locations could have been covered in our, in our current sweep, so if the addresses can be provided to us, we would be happy to double-check that.
I'm sure we're doing it. I know this is very common, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're trying to be supportive of your efforts.
No, thank you. And I think, I live off of Roosevelt Avenue as well, and I see the same activity that you're describing, and hence why communities like around Roosevelt and other parts of our city are, they need, they need these more proactive inspections to ensure that illegal behavior is tampered down.
The other question I have is just this, you know, the technology is so sophisticated now. So, my question is, again, I know we don't always want to work with NYPD, I have great respect for them, but they have thousands of people watching the websites, as you know, like over a thousand. So, my question is, to try to be proactive, do you work with, I don't know if the AG, you know better than I, does that, I don't know if the DA does that, I know what they do, but I don't know if they have that kind of capacity. So, my question is, do you work with other agencies that are constantly scouring the web for illegal actors? Obviously, they're looking probably for more criminal, and you're looking for more civil. But, you know, unfortunately, they're all illegal. So, my question is, what are you doing to work with other agencies on not just referring, but also proactively watching the web, which is full of this kind of activity?
Yeah, no, thank you so much. We, we'll be doing more of that, you know, as, as time goes on in what we're seeing, right, with the current federal administration, because obviously, as was mentioned during the remarks by Chair Aviles, right, we do see that people tend to, there's just more opportunity for scams when there's different administrations coming in with different approaches to our immigrant community. We work, like, as we mentioned, with the district attorney's offices and the Attorney General, and we'll continue to do that and having these discussions as well, in terms of what we can do proactively with them to identify places that we should all be looking at, or, you know, instead of just reacting to a complaint that comes in.
Okay, so they, they are doing that kind of proactive web research, as far as you know?
I don't know the specifics of how they're approaching these cases, but we definitely have the relationships now to be in touch with them and work together to address it as an issue.
Yeah, we can.
PD does, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We can make sure to follow up with, with all the DA's offices again, and the AG about any type of cyber capacity they might have.
Okay. And the other question is, just fake, you know, keeping websites up to date. Our information, this is more Moya than you indicates, according to the brief that we read, that's maybe not your website, but Moya's website is not up to date. So, how do you keep your website up to date? And you know, it's hard for us because our agencies cannot work in silos, we've all got to work together. So, I guess, like, do you look at other agency websites because you're concerned about consumer issues? How do we keep all of our websites up to date, so that there is information? Because the public relies on them so much.
Well, we do definitely look at our website, and we are constantly looking to update it and put things that are relevant, or, you know, very timely in terms of cases, and what's up to date, any updates that we have to rules and enforcement that we do in different industries. And we do work with other agencies, and so if we observe something, we would raise it, you know, we would bring it to their attention to address and make sure that we'll keep collaborating. But, it's certainly great feedback that we can bring back for, just in general, on, on addressing the issue of making sure that all of our websites are up to date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. In, in that vein, do you connect individuals impacted by immigration services fraud with trusted legal service providers?
So, we do refer them to Moya's legal assistance groups, so that they can get services through them.
So, are you, I'm sorry, just for clarification, are you directing people to Moya, who is then directing people to other people?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that we use, we use the, the information available on Moya's website with respect to the legal, I forget the name.
Yeah, they, they rebranded.
Support, support centers.
Yeah, Legal Support.
Yes, that's, that's, yes.
Yeah, which brings a particular challenge, because Moya's website is woefully out of date. It doesn't have links that work. They refer people to Action NYC when they rebranded it to Legal Service Center, it is a vortex mess. So, we're referring to people to get referred to other people, I would suggest you referring directly to the legal service providers. Do you have a relationship with the legal service providers, or are you simply moving everyone to Moya?
We, we know the legal service providers as well, that Moya engages with, so perhaps only we can take under advisement of how we can more directly get people to that location if there's something wrong with the website.
There's a lot wrong, and it's not new information, which is the incredibly irritating and responsible thing of this whole mess. In, does, how does DCWP determine where an immigrant who's a victim of victim services fraud is directed to? So, is it to provider, does it, when does it go to, let's say, the Office of New Americans or the AGs? Like, what's, what's the assessment of how you direct people?
Thank you, Chair. I want to make sure you understood correctly, and if it's not responsible, obviously, let me know, I know you will.
No, no, all good.
But, I, I think, so if it's somebody who needs services, which I think can happen, I think both can happen, I guess, maybe is what I'm trying to say, right? If it's a case that we identify and we're like, you know what, it's not going to be much that we can do, or another government agency already has an open case related to a particular immigration service provider, then we would suggest that that individual goes that way. We wouldn't do it without speaking with the individual, because, you know, we're going to respect that person's information and who they reach out to initially. If they need services, we heard your feedback, so we're going to be looking at that to make sure that they are connected with, with a proper legal services provider, the Office for New Americans, you know, they have their own hotline for similar providers, but I, my understanding is that it's two separate countries. I used to oversee the Office for New Americans at the state, I had some knowledge there, but I don't, I don't know how they've potentially made changes. So, we generally do go through our sister agency in the city, and if there's other coordination, of course, we can, we can continue to pursue that, so there's more avenues of assistance for these New Yorkers.
Have you, have you had the, has the agency had the experience of people calling you back and saying, "I can't get in touch with anyone in particular, legal service providers"?
I've had not had that experience, or my team, when they're engaging with folks in outreach events, or, or in terms of constituent cases.
Well, would they know where to call back?
Yes, I would, I would say that our, by accessing our team and what we do at outreach events, it's not 301, we have direct phone numbers to all of our team members, and we also have a general intake line that we monitor.
Great. I have that experience all the time. We, if we send people to Moya's legal services, they often call back and say, "No one's calling me back, I cannot find a legal service provider, where do we go?" So, I'm, I'm a little surprised that you are not sharing that experience, but I guess I'm glad.
I think customer service has always been something that we've held paramount, and in particular, my background too, is community liaison, perhaps, in elected officials' office. I've gone through those same wars to a certain degree, and I think from, from my team particularly, it's critical that we are responsive and communicative.
Yeah, I think what it leads to is certainly nothing in your, in your bailiwick as an agency, but the fact that we know as a city that the demands for legal service provision are significantly higher than we have been willing to invest in. Like, we know that is 100% a clear fact. So, we do have a challenge of having infinitely more need than we have been willing to support. So, we'll continue to, to deal with that in our, in our various capacities. How, how does DCWP monitor immigration services fraud targeting New Yorkers in different languages? I guess you mentioned, Commissioner, earlier that you have staff that speak eight different languages. So, across this very vast city, how are those, I suspected it falls to those eight inspectors to kind of manage what is coming in in various languages?
So, these are actually not inspectors, the eight that I was referring to are from our outreach team, in terms of the education that we provide to be able to make those connections in the language that people feel most comfortable having conversations, and it also obviously builds the trust. In terms of monitoring in various languages, I don't think we have that data, but I will say that part of the inspectors going out and doing their patrols and things like that, if they observe something, not using just English, but a language that they may speak, because we do have a number of capabilities also related to languages other than English in our inspection team, they will know those as well. So, it'll be part of the work that they're doing on the field, or we would have done it, they might have a list of places, because we would have done the research ahead of sending them out to do proactive investigations as well. And that's going to cover a number of languages also.
Got it. So, when, so is the agency able to follow up in language of whatever language is incoming?
Yes, yes. If it's not that somebody already speaks it, then we're very comfortable using language line.
I seem to remember from our budget hearing, at least, we, no, it's, so we have about 400 active headcount, about half of those folks speak a language other than English, and I think in total, it covers close to 40 languages, if I'm not mistaken.
Can you say that one more time, you have 400 what?
We have 400 active headcount, 400 people in the agency. And then, half of those folks speak a language other than English, and in terms of languages covered, it's about 40, I think.
Got it. Got it, thank you. In terms of, are there priorities given to certain languages or communities, or fraud types? Are you seeing any shifts around that?
No, I don't think we have any data right now to lean us in one way, or No, I don't think we have any data right now to lean us in one way or another. I think we can, you know, certainly follow the trends of the majority of, you know, the languages in the city, but we don't have enough to point us one way or another.
Yeah, and I guess a quick second question in terms of the testimony. You mentioned in the past two months that the team conducted 750 inspections. Obviously, that is a very large amount. Is that reminiscent of what you do on a monthly basis, or was this a unique circumstance?
It was a unique circumstance, Councilmember Chair Aviles. Basically, what we do in the numerous industries that we go and enforce different rules is that we look at, you know, we might look at trends, but we may look at what's happening right now. And we know that ever since the change in administration in Washington, this is an area where we should focus and do sort of flood this space in a particular way, and will continue, but I don't think it will be in that, you know, to that extent. Similarly, I'll give you the example of every year we do a sweep off places that do tax preparation when the tax season coming up, because we want to, again, remind people that, okay, this is happening, people are going to be looking for these services, so how do we address that issue? So we'll do things like that, home improvement contractors, a lot of work happens in the summer when it warms up. So we might like do certain focus in different times of the year, and this was one where we decided to do a very aggressive approach to make sure that we identified all these places and can see it. And then, of course, we will be doing follow-up. It's not that all of a sudden we're going to go from 750 to nothing, but I don't think it'll be in the 750 number.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off on the chair, exactly what the Commissioner is saying, this is not a one and done thing. We need to look at, like, what are going to be the results of these adjudications. So just to refresh everyone's memory, we issue summons, they then have to be adjudicated at oath. So we don't actually get to issue the penalties directly. So it has to go through the system of adjudication. And so I think, once we see what the results of that are, what summons get upheld, which businesses were out of business but we still are getting complaints about, we'll reassess as 2025 goes on, and we will reallocate resources again as we look at the results of this first wave.
Got it. I'd like to recognize, we've been joined by Councilmember De La Rosa and Councilmember Joseph, thank you for being here. In terms of, I totally get being responsive to what, to trends that are happening around the city, particularly in vulnerable communities. Can you give me a sense, though, of like, what would be the non-flood inspection level around immigration services?
I think, Councilmember, it's, I think it's part of what Mike was saying earlier in terms of having to evaluate what is occurring after this first sweep. In general, whenever we, the way our operations, our field enforcement happens, is we have proactive inspections that occur, we have cadences that we might put on a particular industry, and certainly if we ever issue a summons that is adjudicated and the party's found guilty, that is put on a kind of a path to be re-inspected again sooner. In terms of, in terms, so I guess that's all to say that while we're still evaluating, I think we have to come back to you in terms of how we would, where we expect the numbers to lie in a non-flood scenario.
You know, I think, listen, I, we are well aware that the agency's mandate is much, much bigger than the amount of staffing it has been allocated, very well aware of that. And in fact, I think it is irresponsible of the city to continue to place mandates on the agency and starve the workforce that is supposed to implement that. So, you know, I think it's to recognize that you are operating under severe staffing limitations, and so this, but it, but it is important to understand what the general cadence of the enforcement mechanism is, because if the field understands that this only happens once a year, it operates very effectively around that. And we know this is a consistent issue across communities, across New York City. So I guess I'd love to understand a little bit more, and certainly, even with the summons, the inspections that were done, would love to understand how many of those happened in my district. In particular, you know, I think what we see enormous fraudulent activity impacting the Chinese community, in particular, on multiple fronts. So I'd love to see some more focused enforcement and support in that community, is particularly vulnerable to fraud.
We can get you the numbers for those inspections.
Yeah, particularly because there are so many dialects, and the community can be very isolated and not trusting of, for very valid reasons of civil entities. So I'd like to turn it over at this point to Councilmember Hanif for her questions.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mayuga and Carlos, great to see you. So could you share what the, how the current budget for immigration services fraud outreach is divvied up? I know that DCWP is supportive of my bill into 205, but the costs are what are concerning. So I'd like to know just, how are you spending the funds outside of, of course, salaries on outreach materials? Is there a set number of workshops that you're conducting? Is there a set amount of resources being allocated to actual service provide, trusted service providers? Could you, are you able to elaborate on that?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilmember. So our budget, I apologize because I didn't bring numbers on our outreach team for the budget specifically, we can, we can certainly circle back with what that, with what that is. It wasn't too long ago, we just testified for the budget. It's not broken down for ISP specifically in terms of outreach. I think one of the things that we try to do when we do outreach, yes, we'll have Days of Action, like we had recently for this specifically, and last year, we were having the one on Worker Bill of Rights, right? Once we put out that bill of rights that, you know, based on the legislation passed by this council, and we'll have another one of those coming up again closer to the summer. But generally, our outreach will cover a number of issues, if not general reviews of the agency, because we do want people to try to understand the different things that they can come to us for. And sometimes it also obviously depends on who we're partnering with, if they have a particular area of focus that we want to, we want to stress, whether it is the levitistas, right? We're going to make sure that they know about those rules that apply to them, or again, just making reference to our Free Tax Program. Okay, these are the things we want you to pay attention, but also know these other pieces about us generally, and try to get people, honestly, I try to just get people to follow us on social media, because it's the way that information is received by most people, right? At HelloDCWP, for anybody who's listening who's not following us yet, to please follow us and get information that way. So there's no specific numbers in terms of outreach for ISPs, because it's just all of outreach, and we can, we can get back to you on what that number is.
So like, you're saying, like, every sort of material includes a menu of the services offered or the rights that...
I see. No, not every, not, we have specific ones, like, for example, the immigration, the Consumer Bill of Rights for immigrants, right? Like, that's going to be one thing. There's obviously a budget that was spent on that in terms of photocopies and distribution of that. I just don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yeah, I would say, in terms of the outreach team wise, it's just five folks on that team. We don't have, like, particular contracts necessarily with providers that facilitate outreach. All the outreach we do is on our own with our partners in the communities. And then, we do have literature that we've developed that did have a cost, and we update periodically. We have our Consumer Tip Booklet for immigrants, we have the Consumer Bill of Rights for immigration service providers. So that's kind of all existing in-house, and we can figure out the numbers for you there. In terms of this bill, 205, which we are supportive of, I anticipate, and I think your, the central staff should have these numbers already, but it's about 1.7 million, we would anticipate, in new budget. That is around 680,000, that is, that is new staff, in particular, an outreach coordinator, somebody to develop contacts with ethnic, ethnic media channels, for example, procurement for the advertising campaign, two folks to work on complaint intake systems and reporting analysis to help guide our eventual reporting as well as enforcement.
And how many people would that be?
That's five people.
Additional five.
That's additional five, yes. And then, in terms of the OTPS for the advertising campaign, we anticipate, based on the prescription that is in the bill, that that's close, upwards of a million dollars. With TV ads alone being around 500,000, if we want to also consider subway ads, bus shelters, all these things, I think that's where the OTPS would land if we, if the bill would be passed, as is. I think for that reason, we've wanted to highlight that there are, these are, these are budget realities that we have to face, so I think we're supportive of the bill and want to talk through these, these real numbers with you all as we negotiate this in redlining.
No, absolutely, and I appreciate that, because you all are already doing incredible work to get the word out at a time when we've got fraudsters preying on our community, which is a longstanding issue, and then you've got the federal administration and our top leaders also targeting our community and detaining them, deporting them without due process. And, you know, we have to talk about those issues as something that we're going to see far more of an uptick with and a normalization of like, that this is normal, that, yeah, immigrant communities, because the federal administration thinks, you know, what you said or what you think isn't fine by our rules, you're, you're not going to be, you're not going to be allowed in our country anymore. And I think our city has a distinct and unique role to play in that particular political, in this particular political moment, which I think, which I, which is why I, you know, want to push for the additional funding to be something that is seriously considered because of the ways in which people are isolating and are experiencing a different level of fear that's not just as they're trying to get their status, citizenship status done or reunited with their family members. For the five outreach folks that are on the team, what are their roles?
Their, well, we've, we've broken up that, that team's kind of ambit to focus on kind of turf areas that they cover. The turfs really are focused partly a little bit on where they live, but also their language capacity as well. I think both those things help them facilitating outreach, both in the mornings and the evenings and weekends.
And it's like street outreach, like, what's the...
So my, my preference usually is for folks to be able to do presentations or remarks to captive audiences, you know? We'll go to your monthly meeting, we'll, we'll go to a tenant association meeting, things like that. The second preference I would have then is probably canvassing direct outreach, like, meeting folks, you know, at high transit subway hubs, engaging with them with our literature, our Worker Bill of Rights, our Consumer Tip Booklet. And then also, we do high-visibility events, like tabling, for example. So I kind of rank order that outreach in that sort of priority myself. I think it's a way for us to really have dedicated time with New Yorkers, because, again, to reiterate, I think the work that we do is incredibly essential for folks living in New York City.
And then, alongside the, the street canvassing and the presentations, are there, is there like a set of community leaders that the team is meeting with on a regular basis? Or is there like a roundtable that happens with trusted immigration service providers? And has the agency participated in, or what kinds of digital media and PSAs has DCWP engaged in to get the word out?
Thank you, yes. So I, I think Ms. Tek is still here, and I know that recently I went and spoke with the community leaders from the organization. That was really exciting to talk to them, because it's like, okay, I'm going to give you the tools, and they become sort of ambassadors, right, of all this information that is correct information to share with their community. So we do things like that. I mentioned roundtable we did recently with organizations, especially to talk about immigration service providers, and we do plan to continue doing those in a quarterly basis so that we can continue engaging and reevaluating and making sure, say, okay, what is it? What's going on? What have we seen? Any changes that we should be making or consider, any issues that we're seeing? So we plan to continue doing that. In terms of social media, sometimes we partner also with organizations on Facebook Live events, you know, to provide information, so we'll broadcast those as well and continue. We do have a digital campaign that's been ongoing for the last month or so, specific to immigration service providers, so we'll do things like that as well.
Got it. And then, how are you assessing, like, how the agency is doing in terms of outreach? Like, is there a sort of, do you guys have deliverables that you're like, we have to meet this objective?
Yes. Carlos's team is quite amazing. I mean, they, they do have targets that they'll show, share with me to make sure that we're all aligned on how many presentations we're aiming to complete. We look at prior year numbers and see how we can either, you know, surpass that or meet it, or adjust depending on how successful we were, make any, any particular changes we may need to make. In terms of social media, we can certainly see, you know, followers, if it's like on our website, you can see how many clicks there are and things like that. So we do, we do track things in a way that we believe will be helpful for us to assess whether we were successful or not, and how it informs what we do in the future.
Thank you. And then my final question is, could you just describe the relationship of DCWP and Moya on this issue? And I know that there's the referral process, but what else, how else are you, two agencies, engaging?
Thank you, yes. We, you know, we work together with them. Certainly, one of the main issues here will be to, obviously, refer individuals to the providers that are accessible through Moya. We've heard the issues with the website, so we're going to be working on that to make sure that, we're checking to make sure that individuals do receive the guidance that they need. And certainly, when we're doing outreach and education is another area where we collaborate with them, obviously, especially we're trying to target the immigrant population, they're going to be strong partners with us as well.
Yeah, I'd say Moya, we collaborate on a number of events together. You know, as recently as that Day of Action last week, Moya contributed a number of volunteers, so, to help staff locations, but also with the language capacity. There are the referrals, they do refer complaints to us as we refer folks to their services as well. I think on the advocacy level, we're in constant discussions too about what's happening across the country. So they've, they've definitely been close partners with us in this space.
On that piece, the advocacy around the state and fed, could you just describe what's going on and any updates? And then I'll...
Well, I think the particular, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I think the particular moment that comes to mind of where we had discussions with, with respect to our Free Tax Program and what we should be communicating out to folks about filing our taxes in this particular moment, I think we have guidance up on our website now. Any first-time ITIN filers should really meet with the legal service provider first, for example, and that's some, some of the work that we're doing ourselves to make sure that communications are clear between our agencies on that issue.
Okay, thank you. A couple more questions, and then I'm going to turn it back over to a couple colleagues who have questions. Earlier, when you were answering a question by Chair Aviles, Commissioner, you mentioned that you're directing people to Moya. Since Moya refuses to be here, how do we know what those outcomes are of those referrals?
We can certainly get those outcomes and bring them back to you and share them with you. Are you, is it specific about people who reach out and get referrals?
Yeah, because we, I mean, if you're referring people directly to Moya, we don't then know what the outcome is. We don't know if people are having their issues answered, we don't know how the agency is responding. It's like we're dealing with a black box, because they're refusing to be here today. So it, I mean, it's, it's pretty insane that we now have to rely on you to get an answer from Moya, but that is what it is. Are you following up with victims of fraud? Like, what's the agency follow-up? So if someone has been victimized by an immigration service provider, then what type of follow-up are you having directly with the victims?
Well, we certainly do a lot of communication with them in terms of questions that we may have to assess the case and how far we can take the investigation. have to assess the case and how far we can take the investigation, to make sure that we get the information that we feel is necessary to move the investigation forward. And of course, making sure that then they are receiving the services that they need from a legitimate source.
And in the past few fiscal years, how many cases of fraud does DCWP receive from Moya?
I don't think we have for the past few fiscal years. I know in my communications with Moya that I've received, Moya and OASO, this year at least four. Last year, I think a similar number as well.
Okay.
Those are calendar years, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I understand Councilmember Joseph has some questions.
Thank you, Chairs. Quick question around protecting immigrant New Yorkers Task Force. Does DCW and Moya still meet with members of this task? Would it be... If not, would it be helpful for the task force to reconvene?
We participate in the PINE task force.
How many meetings have you had so far this year?
The PINE task force is, I think it's a separate organization. They've had two meetings, I believe, this year.
And you've attended the meetings and shared resources with them?
Yes. We've been, I mean, I think we've been a part of the PINE task force since I started the agency almost nine years ago.
With this landscape right now, with the federal effect, how does DCWP handle immigration service fraud cases with the landscape changing every minute? Because everything is something new. What we knew today is not what's happening tomorrow. So how are you handling that on the ground?
As soon as we get a complaint, you know, one of the things that we were sharing earlier is that our team knows to refer it to an attorney so that we can look into it further without doing outreach to the business right away because our experience is that they'll disappear as long as they get outreach from a government agency. So we want to be very strategic about it. So that's one way that we're working with it. You know, obviously, we want to do more education. Part of the reason we're supportive of the bill to get more outreach done so that individuals know to come forward and let us know of anything that they're seeing. And then at the same time, as our inspectors are out conducting their fieldwork, if they identify also other issues, they will bring them back for us to make an assessment and see if it warrants a different approach.
Since January of 2025 till today, how many complaints have you received?
I think it's eight. Eight complaints.
And how do you go about... I wasn't here for the beginning of the meeting. Sorry about that. But how do you go about when you receive a complaint? What are the steps that you take?
So as the Commissioner mentioned, Councilmember, if a complaint comes in through 311 or a DCWP's own portal, it goes to our Consumer Services Unit, which is our intake unit for consumer complaints. And for this category, all the immigration service provider complaints go to a lawyer who will assess the complaint, see if we have enough information to pursue an investigation, reach out to any contact provided with the case, and also determine whether this is a complaint that, while there are facts, would be better handled by another agency like a district attorney's office or the Attorney General. One thing we were talking about earlier was that we are redoubling our efforts to have good relationships with the district, the five district attorney's offices, with the Attorney General. So if we think this might be part of a bigger criminal investigation, we know that we can send it there. And likewise, the district attorneys can send us stuff if it's something that's more ripe for civil enforcement.
Is any of these cases ever involved NYPD?
No, I mean, not in recent memory.
Okay. Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you. We'd like to acknowledge we were joined by Councilmember Krishnan. I'd like to follow up on the task force. Can you... I want to make sure that we're talking about the same task force. So the PINE task force is being convened. Who sits at that table and who's convening it?
Well, from our team, it's our director of community affairs and some attorneys that join, from Mike's team, that would join those meetings. I think there are... When I've gone to those meetings, there've been representatives from the district attorney's offices. I think Ona had a representative as well. I think we're talking about the same PINE task force that was convened by NYIC for many years. I know they've re... In most recent months, they're rethinking how they want to operate and like in terms of agenda setting and having certain chairs and vice chairs. And I think that's been kind of what's taken up the agenda for most initial meetings. But they have further meetings that are coming down the line that I think will be quarterly, that, of course, we will continue participating in and making sure our staff is available with information and updates on our end.
So who's driving it in particular? Like, is it Ona or...
I thought it was NYIC. I feel a little bit weird maybe talking about it when it's not ours, but I can find out for sure.
But you are participating.
But we are there for sure.
So you can speak to what is happening there. We'll follow up, obviously. It's not your task force, but you are there. In terms of, let's see, I just wanted to follow up on... I'm sorry if I missed this. Can you know just for the record, like, what the outreach... I may be conflating these things, so your budget may be different, but the outreach and like education campaign part of your budget is what?
I don't think we had a... We didn't have a particular number with respect to our campaign, our current OTPS for campaigns in general. I will say that we have five staff members on our team that currently do outreach. And then with respect to Introduction 205, if it were to advance, I think we'd anticipate that being about 1.7 million.
So the 1.7 million includes the five FTE?
No, so I'm sorry. The 1.7 million would be another five FTE outside of the five I'm mentioning. So we currently have five outreach folks, and then for this bill, we have a request for five FTE.
Ahora entiendo. I understand. But outside of the FTE, though, obviously, purchasing digital ads, doing all that manner of work requires resources. Is there an allocated budget for printing flyers and doing digital outreach?
You mean currently?
Correct.
We do, which is... That's what I was saying. I don't have the number in front of me. We had it like for the budget here, and we just didn't bring it to there.
Got it, got it.
But it's easy to share, yes.
Okay. And you mentioned that you also receive cases from the district attorney. We could, have you?
Yeah, we could, we haven't recently. But again, we've really doubled down on sort of rekindling those relationships, making sure we have that dialogue. And these are conversations we've been having since the beginning of 2025. So we're hopeful that if district attorneys find something that's really more prone for civil enforcement, which may happen for a variety of reasons, they have our content, they have my email, they have my colleagues' emails, and they can reach out to us. We're hopeful that will bear fruit as we proceed in 2025.
Okay. And in terms of, I guess I'd like to know from your perspective, what are the tools that you think you need in order to maximize this work, to address this issue?
Thank you for asking.
To address many of these issues.
Yes, yes. I really think when it comes to immigration service providers, we just really need people to come forward. We really struggle getting complaints in so that we can look into them. And then from there, really have a better sense of where we're getting stuck in terms of moving an investigation forward. But we really have a hard time getting individuals to let us know what's happened to them quickly because, as we said, and, you know, I know that all of you know this as well, these fly-by-night operations are very difficult to catch, especially if there's too much time that goes from the moment that the action took place to the moment that we find out about it and get enough information to move it forward. So I'll start with that and pass it over to Mike Tiger for follow-up.
Yeah, everything... I agree with everything the Commissioner said, of course. But also, this really is an all-hands-on-deck. I think we all recognize this from all the different government stakeholders, that we should be working together. And so I think the biggest thing is beyond even resources, beyond what's going on in individual investigations, building the sustained, trusting relationships in different communities. And that's where the council and individual members can really be invaluable, and your staff can be invaluable in building that report, sending people to us that we can build up investigations. This was mentioned before, but we actually had a successful case against, in the Horizonte case at Oath last year. And that was, we worked hand-in-hand with Councilmember Juan's staff to build up that case, and that was very helpful. So I think if we all work together, I think that is like the most important thing, to just have that constant drumbeat, to build up the trust so people can build, so people can provide complaints, that we can do investigations, and it becomes a virtuous cycle.
So in terms of the timeframe, or from the moment of notification, or are you... You're providing summonses on the spot when you walk in and you see all this stuff. You give them a summons. From that time to potentially oath, what's the length of time that that normally takes?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers with exactitude right in front of me, but it can take months. It will... It takes months typically for the time between a summons is issued and then it's ultimately adjudicated at oath. And of course, businesses have the opportunity to seek adjournments.
Right.
They sometimes default and are able to vacate the defaults, and it gets put back on a calendar. And that's not an immigration-specific issue. That's just the way that items are adjudicated generally. So I can't give an exact number of like, oh, in this case, it'll be definitely this amount of months before we get something that's finally resolved. Once something is actually heard in the hearings division, the oath businesses also have the right to appeal within oath to their appeals unit. So for in the time we actually have a final adjudication that can actually be collected upon, a summons that has issued penalties, it can take a big chunk of the year.
Yeah, I think that the nature of the challenge that we're facing here, when you see upon return, most of them have up and left.
It is... I'm sorry.
We're not going to be able to draw enforcement in a real way if cases drag on. Obviously, we always support due process, and we want that due process. But in your recommendation, do you have any recommendations around how we can speed up that process to ensure there is actual accountability and people are following the law?
I think that's something that we want to give a little more thought to. I think it's definitely a systemic issue that is a challenge that we have experienced throughout the years. I don't want to give an ad hoc recommendation right now, but I think you raise a very real concern, Councilmember. And I think we can talk internally and discuss whether we have more concrete recommendations for the committee.
Great. Do we have any last final questions?
Okay. I think we may have... Give it one last look before you're off the hook.
Not mine.
I know. I'm talented. Hold on one second. Okay, just one thing that continues to arise, and I think this is related to some earlier questioning. Is DCWP tracking any fraudulent websites that are popping up relevant to someone's immigration case, such as fraudulent websites that maybe mimic the Department of Justice?
I don't think we have a systemic list that we're developing, but this is... The issue that you're raising, we are familiar with. And if we see, obviously, if we get a tip or a complaint that focuses on a certain site, we'll start to develop that list, and it'll be in our files. But we don't have a systemic list of all sites that are mimicking government sites.
Yeah. When you actually search for USCIS, the second search is a fraudulent site that mimics exactly that site. It is a huge problem.
I think, is this the one that's mentioned in the report that just has like periods in between or no periods in between?
I don't remember. I don't recall. But this site has been noted by legal service providers across the board, particularly with all these mandates that are coming from the federal government. And also, the new scams of people receiving direct emails, receiving correspondence through mail that says they should be deporting themselves. Is that something that has come to the awareness of the agency?
I mean, I think we're publicly aware of that. We haven't gotten individual complaints about it, but we are aware, we read the same reports that you have seen. But if you, again, if any of your constituents faces that and has like an actual letter that they can forward, that always will be helpful.
Yeah.
There are a few community-based organizations that have raised this question of the information coming out to self-deport, and that's a conversation we're having with them as well, off the back of our roundtable we had the other week.
So in the instance of this particular website that is clearly fraudulent and very, very dangerous, how does the agency begin to try to address this issue?
I mean, it's definitely something, you know, we're looking at, and that's why, of course, we're engaging with all the other state regulatory stakeholders in the city. That's something we can talk with them, with those partners, about what's the best approach. It can be a challenge to take, you know, to take down fraudulent websites to something that we deal with in a different subject matter areas that we regulate. But it's definitely a real harm, and we recognize that. And we definitely, it's something we're thinking about and thinking about with partners, about the best way to approach.
Okay. I guess with that, obviously, we have a ton of work to do. I thank you for your time and being here and the work that you do. I would just continue to encourage proactive enforcement. What is clear is severe noncompliance with our laws across the city, and I hope our city will continue to invest in this agency's capacity to maximize its work and protect New York City residents because immigrants and non-immigrants alike, that is what the work of the agency is. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we'll continue to have folks monitor the hearing as well.
Thank you. And now we will open for public testimony. I remind the members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio/video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's oversight hearing topic, combating immigration services fraud, or on the legislation on today's hearing agenda, Introduction 205, Introduction 980. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the close of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. The following languages are available for interpretation: English, Spanish, Mandarin, and Haitian Creole. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. Now I will call our first in-person panel. Madeline, Hildelen, Luisana, Amalia, and Jorge. And we've also been joined by Councilmember Bacher.
Would you like to start?
Oh, prima al botón. Buenas tarde, miembro del consejo. Soy miembro de la CONMENA, una organización de los derechos de inmigrantes en Staten Island. Hoy elijo no compartir mi nombre, pero es importante para mí alzar mi voz sobre lo que está ocurriendo en mi comunidad. pero es importante para mí alzar mi voz sobre lo que está ocurriendo en mi comunidad. En este momento escucho un profundo temor entre las personas sobre el nuevo registro de emigración, el riesgo de deportación y cómo podría ser la vida en un centro de detención.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I am a member of La Colmena. It's an organization for immigrants' rights in Staten Island. Today, I wish to not share my name, but it is important to raise my voice about what's happening in my community. At this moment, I feel a huge, um, fear, and I feel the fear amongst people in regards to the new registry of immigration and the risk of deportation and how our lives could be in a detention center.
Por eso estoy muy agradecida con la Colmena. Es soy una fuente confiable y de apoyo.
For this reason, I'm very grateful with La Colmena because it's a very trustworthy source of support.
Haciendo todo lo posible por responder preguntas y guiar a la comunidad en medio de tanta incertidumbre.
And it's, they're doing everything that's possible to respond questions and to guide the community amongst so much uncertainty.
Apoyo a los proyectos INTRO 0205 e INTRO 0980.
I support the projects INTRO 0205 and INTRO 0980.
Porque podrían, podrían ayudar a protegerlos, a los migrantes, de no caer en manos de actores desonestos.
Because these can protect immigrants from not falling to the hands of dishonest actors.
Por favor, sigan impulsando estas iniciativas a favor de la comunidad de migrante.
Please continue pushing these initiatives in favor of the immigrant community.
Y no se olviden de la Colmena.
And do not forget La Colmena.
Ya que es, ya que es necesario, este necesita un fuerte apoyo en Staten Island.
Because it does need a strong support in Staten Island.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Gracias, jamás podemos olvidar a la Colmena, gracias por su testimonio.
Queridos miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad, soy miembro de Mixteca y vengo el día de hoy a testificar acerca del abuso e injusticia que he vivido por parte de un abogado de emigración.
Dear members of the council, I am the member of Mixteca and I come today to testify with regards to the abuse and injustices I have suffered from an immigration attorney.
He vivido en los Estados Unidos por más de 25 años.
I have lived in the U.S. for more than 25 years.
Por varios años he estado buscando una manera de conseguir documentación ya que deseo poder ser parte de esta comunidad.
And I have been looking for documentation for several years because I want to be part of this community.
Con un estatus formal.
With a formal status.
Sin embargo, durante años busqué un abogado que me pueda ayudar con mi proceso a mí y a mi esposo.
However, I've been looking for an attorney for several years, someone who can help me and my husband.
En febrero de 2024 encontré un abogado que me dijo que me podía ayudar con mi parol militar.
And on February of 2024, I did find a lawyer who told me he could help me with my military parole.
Ya que mi hijo estuvo en la marina.
Because my son was in the Marines.
Varios abogados ya me habían dicho que no tenía caso.
And several attorneys had already said that I had no case.
Sin embargo, este abogado me prometió que me podía ayudar.
However, this attorney promised me that he could help.
A la hora de firmar el contrato.
But when it was time to sign the agreement.
No me brindaron traducción.
They didn't offer translation.
Y por la necesidad.
And because of need.
Lo firme sin confirmar.
Because I needed it, I signed it without confirming.
Luego durante nuestro proceso, el abogado nos trató de manera grosera.
So later on during the process, the attorney treated us in a bad, in a horrible way.
Y solo tomó parte de nuestro dinero.
And he only took part of our money.
El primer incidente ocurrió el 18 de diciembre del 2024.
The first incident happened on December 18 of 2024.
Cuando solicité una actualización de mi ajuste de estatus.
When I requested an update on my, uh, status of adjustment.
Me informó de que presentar mi examen médico.
And he told me that I had to present a medical exam.
Le informé que estaba recibiendo quimioterapia.
I told him I was receiving chemotherapy.
Y que estaba teniendo algunos problemas para obtener el examen certificado.
And that I was having trouble getting the medical exam certified.
Sin embargo, no, se me había informado de antemano, de antemano de este requisito.
However, I had not been informed of this request beforehand.
Y cuando le pregunté por qué había tardado tanto.
And when I asked him why he had taken so long.
En presentar mi solicitud.
In presenting my request.
El señor Leonard H.
Mr. Leonard Hekt.
Empezó a gritarme.
Started shouting at me.
Tiró nuestros papeles al suelo.
He threw our papers to the floor.
Y empezó a gritar que no sabíamos lo que estaba haciendo por nosotros.
And started screaming at us that we didn't know what he was already doing for us.
Luego nos echó de la oficina.
Then he threw us out of the office.
Mi esposo Enrique Pastor fue testigo de este trato.
And my husband Enrique Pastor witnessed this mistreatment.
Su ayudante, al que solo conozco por su nombre Larry.
His assistant, who's, I only know him by the name Larry.
Intervino y hablo con él.
Intervened and spoke with him.
Más tarde, el señor T. H. salió de su oficina y se disculpó por su comportamiento.
And later on, Mr. Hekt left the office and he did apologize for his behavior.
Volvimos el 9 de enero del 2025.
We came back on January 9th of 2025.
Para un seguimiento de mi caso.
To do a follow-up on my case.
Anteriormente, el proceso habíamos acordado que yo pagaría $6,500 por cada uno.
And sometime before, during the process, we had agreed that I would pay $6,500.
Por todo el ajuste de estatus.
For the whole adjustment of the status.
Pero él había dicho que solo tenía que pagar $3,000 para presentar mi solicitud.
But he had said that I would only need to pay $3,000 to present the request.
Ese mismo día nos llamó.
So that same day, he called us.
A su despacho y nos dijo que no presentaría mi solicitud hasta que pagaría el impuesto total de $6,000.
So he called us to the office and said he would not pay, uh, he would not present the request until I would pay the total amount of $6,000.
Cuando cuestioné el repentino cambio de acuerdo.
When I questioned the sudden change in this agreement.
Se irritó y empezó a quejarse.
He got irritated, he started complaining.
Nos dijo que este país no nos quería porque éramos demasiado pobres e ignorantes.
And he told us that this country did not want us because we were, we were too ignorant and poor.
Parecía frustrado.
He seemed frustrated.
Nos dijo que intentaba protegernos.
He was telling us he was just trying to protect us.
Pero empezó a levantar la voz porque nos acusaba de.
And he started raising his voice, accusing us.
De no querer pagarle.
Of not wanting to pay him.
Le pedí una persona que hablara español.
So I asked for someone who would speak Spanish there.
Y me preguntó por qué no sabía inglés si llevaba aquí 25 años.
And he asked me why if I had been living here for 25 years, I did not speak English.
Volví a pedir un intérprete.
I requested an interpreter again.
Y mencionó que sus padres sabían hablar siete idiomas.
And he told us that his parents knew seven languages.
Y volvió a preguntarme por qué no sabía inglés.
And again, he questioned, he asked me why I didn't know English.
Me dijo que no traería un intérprete a menos que le diera todo el dinero.
And he said that unless I gave him all of the money, he wouldn't bring me an interpreter.
Le dije que no, quería continuar el caso con él.
I told him I didn't want to continue the case with him.
Y me dijo que tenía que pagarle toda la cantidad de $6,000.
And he said that I needed to pay the whole amount of $6,000.
Al principio se negó a, a devolvernos los documentos.
So at first, he didn't want to return the documents?
El 26 de marzo, miércoles, llamé para pedir mis documentos nuevamente.
So on Wednesday, March 26, I called again to ask for my documents.
Y con su ayuda de Larry, nos dijo que podíamos recogerlos.
And with Larry's help, he said we could pick them up.
Pero dejó claro que no nos devolvería ningún dinero.
But he left it very clear that he wouldn't return any money.
Pagamos un total de $3,500.
We paid a total of $3,500.
Y nunca presentó nuestra solicitud.
And he never presented our request.
Todo este proceso me afectó demasiado.
This whole process affected me too much.
Ya que también estaba en el proceso de quimioterapia.
Because I was also in the middle of chemotherapy.
Mi salud mental y emocional.
My mental and emotional health.
Caíó porque por un momento sentí que tenía la esperanza de poder recibir documentación, pero al final solo perdí $3,500.
My mental and emotional health really took a fall because at some point I had the hope that I would, that I would get my documentation and at, at the end I just lost $3,000.
Nosotros hemos trabajado mucho por tener una vida digna aquí en Estados Unidos.
We have worked too hard to have a dignified life here in the U.S.
Y es injusto que nos traten y abusen así.
And it's unfair that they abuse and treat us like this.
Por ese, por eso presento este testimonio hoy para que el Consejo pase leyes que protegen nuestra comunidad.
That's why I present my testimony today so that the council will pass the laws that will benefit our community.
La comunidad inmigrante que tanto ayuda a esta ciudad.
The immigrant community that helps this, this city so much.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Gracias por su testimonio. Y para mí, ese señor no tiene, no debe de tener el privilegio de estar trabajando en esta comunidad. Es una injusticia y lo siento tanto, sinceramente. Usted, usted ha hecho una, una queja con el departamento que estaba en audiencia ya temprano, ya más temprano?
Sí, lo hicimos justamente con Jorge Qui Presidente de Mixteca.
Okay.
Y estoy agradecido con ellos porque ellos me han ayudado mucho, su apoyo.
Que bueno. Y es importante, eh, para, para todos los que están en audiencia, si han, si han visto, eh, la información sobre los derechos de las personas cuando están, aquí lo tengo a ver. Que todos sepan que hay una carta de derechos de los consumidores, con respeto a los proveedores de servicio de asistencia para la emigración. Y es totalmente importante que todos sepan que esto está, eh, bueno, en el sitio de web, pero es importante que todos lo conocen, right? Eh, para tener sus derechos ahí. Y bueno, te digo sinceramente, lamento su experiencia.
Gracias.
Espero que podemos hacer más protecciones.
Gracias.
Gracias por su testimonio. Thank you.
Um, good afternoon, chair and council members. My name is Madeline Bravo and I am the Legal Services Coordinator at La Colmena, an immigrant rights organization proudly rooted in Staten Island. Uh, at La Colmena, we hold regular community sessions to hear directly from our community, listening to their fears and questions. With the support of our trusted consultant attorneys, we also offer consultations to provide accurate, reliable information. Too often, our community comes to us after encountering misinformation, especially online and through word of mouth. In some cases, community members have paid over $3,000 and have been misled by individuals claiming to be attorneys, claiming that they can offer a, a sped-up citizenship process, going as far as creating fake USCIS documents and impersonating judges. More recently, we've seen people arriving at our doors with deportation notices or unsure how to navigate the new immigrant registry requirements. These situations create fear and confusion, and in that confusion, people become vulnerable to exploitation. We are gravely concerned that predatory actors will exploit this vulnerability preying on our community by offering false promises and charging outrageous fees, putting people's future at serious risk. This is why we fully support INTRO 0205 and INTRO 0980. These measures are critical to protect our immigrant communities from fraud and abuse. We urge this council to continue standing with us and to never forget Staten Island. And thank you for your time and for your commitment to justice.
Thank you so much. We will not forget La Colmena and Staten Island.
Good morning. My name is Hildeline Colon and I'm the Deputy Director of, um, New Immigrant Community Empowerment NICE, located in Jackson Heights, Queens. I want to bring another perspective that I think that we have talked on is the importance of this type of legislation. But I think the example of the person, or one of our members, shows that this is a gentleman that have a license, that has behaved this ways and treat this person this way. So part of the legislation that we put in here and that I hope that you guys approve, is putting everybody under the same bar. Part of the biggest challenges that we see are not what I think some of what describe is that we are challenging with nonprofit organizations that represent themselves and provide legal services even though they're not DOJ accredited or they don't have a lawyer and a guidance, which I will tell you, for nonprofit like us, it becomes a nightmare. Because what we, what the members in the community are feeling is, but that community organization told me yes and you tell me no. And I have a person here sitting next to me that go through the same process as we have a similar offering in NICE. Uh, we have opened, and I will speak to both of us, that organizations like us have opened legal services provided under the guidance of an attorney because of the need. Because we cannot offer everything. And I think part of the issue is that the need for us to provide in different levels of immigration. I think that is the part, one of the key things that we're seeing here. The other issue that I want to raise is the part that we need to have examples. Uh, I, I, I know Vilda and I know DCWP, but the cases that they come forward have never come to the press, have not seen. Part of the community, and this is from my years of experience of actually prosecuting immigration fraud in the DA's office, is that communities needs to see that when I come forward, works. And that is part of the problem that we have seen lately. I will tell you from my experience, it cannot be the, the, the color of the day. This issue about immigration fraud has to be a continuous process, not only one time.
Thank you, Hildeline. Um, I just want to make sure, just for clarity, you're suggesting that there's, uh, bad actors both in the for-profit space and the nonprofit space, that need, I would, I would assume they're all held to the same standard. There are legal ways and requirements? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
Well, I think there is an issue, right? Immigration law is a federal issue, right? And in order to provide organizations like us and others, especially nonprofits, the goal here is that we become DOJ accredited. This is how a person that, and I'm going to use it as an example, as a coordinator, right? We need the guidance of an immigration attorney to provide legal advice. In the pathway, what we're trying to do is funding organizations like us to, to address that path. Because that's how you take some of the bad actors of the nonprofits to operate in this wiggle room, I'm helping, but I'm providing immigration services, but I'm doing this. I think that's one of the things that all nonprofits that wants to get into this field as a level basic, we need to get to DOJ accredited. Because that's kind of like having a license. The other thing that we haven't discussed, but that I would recommend from my experience, you, we need to get all these people that are providing in New York City immigration services, register. Right now, DCWP cannot ask you, you can't even answer, how many are out there? Because they have something to lose. And they did the same approach with the employment agencies. They forced them to register. They need to cost them, we need to get them out there. Because I will tell you, I, we provide services in the epicenter of fraudland. Jackson Heights, Roosevelt Avenue, my God, you can see anything that you can think of. And the thing is that if you don't force them to come out and there's some kind of registration, uh, like, it's, it's not going to happen. So we need to figure out a way, how do we deal with the bad actors? The lawyers have the bar to, basically to deal with them. But then there's organizations, nonprofits, that right now they're in limbo. And, and it's a misguided because we're here to help you. This is where the regal room starts to unfold. I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah, no, it definitely helps. I think, I think, um, the struggle is capacity and ensuring that we're arming everyone with sufficient capacity to be able to provide.
that we're arming everyone with sufficient capacity to be able to provide.
But I think, I will tell you, and this is, capacity can be divided. I think that part of the process that it was lacking here in this issue is that there are some cases that couldn't see by nonprofits, instead of like the Catholic Migrations in the world. I think we have to determine who needed representation or who is not. And I think right now, part of the biggest challenge right now that we are foreseeing, is that everybody's doing their immigration case on pro se base, because nobody can represent you. Asylum cases take at least 10 years. So it's rarely who's going to be with you for so, for, for so long.
Yeah.
That is part of the process.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. And, and thank you around the suggestion of registration. I think this goes to like so many different issues. Appreciate the testimony. Thank you. Jorge?
Good afternoon, Council Members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jorge Patreys and I'm the community organizer of Misteca, a community-based organization located in Sanzport. We serve both the immigrant community and we have been over a decade in the area. I'm here with community partners from La Colmena, NICE, as well as community members from these organizations, to express the importance of combating immigration fraud. At Misteca, we offer a range of social and legal services to immigrant families and actually we were DOJ accredited recently. Their support is invaluable, but the lack of constant onsite legal counsel still represents a barrier, underscoring the urgent need to better educate and protect the community. I want to kind of second what Hilda Lin said here, of the importance of bringing visibility to the issues that have happened, and also creating a space that is safe for community members to present these cases and talk about it. I think throughout, when we found out there was going to be this hearing, we did a little bit of a campaign within Misteca to talk to different community members, and we got a lot of people come forward talking about the immigration fraud. However, it was really challenging to get them here to testify. There is a fear of, of immigration, of persecution. A lot of them do not want to share the names and, and also kind of goes right now, this recommendation that when we represent things like that, we shouldn't have cameras on community members, because unfortunately, this is the climate that we have right now. I wanted to talk specifically about a community member that was victim of fraud, especially within this fraud of VAWA. So VAWA is a pathway for certain survivors, domestic violence, to apply for immigration relief, without relying on their abusing. This is a critical protection, but in the wrong hands, it can be very fraudulent and, and it could be harmful. We had a community member that spent over twenty-seven thousand dollars. The family and the community members currently seeking mental health at Misteca, and we're providing all the supports because it has devastated her. And her only support system is her son, and her son was accused of abusing her. So at the interview with immigration, she had to tell the truth. She had to tell that the lawyer actually was lying and, and she was denied the opportunity. However, this case wouldn't have become so important and the tension if it hadn't been covered by the news. This was very related to a Bronx lawyer that was, had done this for years, two thousands of cases. That's why here at Misteca, with La Colmena, NICE, we kind of bring in this perspective of a small, mid-sized community organizations and importance of creating pathways and laws such as 2005 and 980 to make sure that we're protecting the community. Thank you so much and we really urge for you guys to pass this bill. Have a great day.
Thank you, Jorge. And we just want to thank all of you, all Colmena, Misteca, NICE, for all the work that you are doing under some pretty difficult circumstances, because you hold both the heart and the challenges that our community is facing while it's actively being attacked by the federal government. So thank you for the work that you're doing and thank you for your testimony. The next, the next panel is going to be Nick Gulota and Deborah Lee and Christian.
And just as they're coming up, I just want to take a moment to recognize we've been joined in the balcony by Empowering Our Families Initiative Youth Leadership Institute. Thank you so much for joining. And Pearls and Ivy Foundation Scholars. We're so happy that you're all here with us today.
Nick, if you'd like to start? And we are adding Natalia Núñez to this panel.
Great. Thank you Chairs, Villas and Menon for being champions on this issue. My name is Nick Gulota and while I serve as the Chief of Staff to Councilmember Julie One, I'm here to testify in my personal capacity as someone who's worked on this issue for many years and is the former Director of Outreach and Organizing for the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, MOYA. As the federal government implements cruel anti-immigrant policies and eliminates critical consumer protections, New York City can step up to protect immigrants by passing Intros 980 and 205. With every new executive order, New Yorkers are targeted with scams, false promises, and misleading claims. Signage, flyers, palm cards, and digital ads from notarios that are meant to trick immigrants to believing that they are seeking assistance from an attorney have never been more brazenly advertised than they are today. The current civil penalty for an ISP for improper advertisements or engaging in prohibited conduct is a mere three thousand five hundred dollars for a first violation. The amount, that amounts to a slap on the wrist. The going rate for a single asylum application can be as high as five thousand dollars on Roosevelt Avenue. Intro 980 doubles DCWP's current penalty schedule, raising the minimum penalty to seven thousand five hundred for a first violation and going up to twenty thousand for repeat violations. This is a critical step to make examples and deter bad actors who seek to take advantage of New Yorkers. Councilmember Hanif's Intro 205 expands and makes essential and well-considered updates to Local Law 63 of 2017. But it's also necessary that MOYA and DCWP conduct meaningful ISP fraud-specific outreach. The sort of all-inclusive outreach tactics, like including a message about ISP fraud in a 30-minute Know Your Rights presentation or in a flyer with a list of other resources, while important, are not a replacement for dedicated outreach campaign that Intro 205 requires. Historically, the city has had a complaint-driven approach to investigating notario fraud, and I'll wrap up. But the evidence of deceptive business practices are in plain view in our communities. We can start by requiring a minimal number, or a minimum number of annual and educational visits and inspections to the thousands of businesses with the words notario or multiservices in their names. And similar proactive investigations can be done on digital ads over Facebook, WeChat, WhatsApp. Would also just like to mention that, would highly recommend a sort of worst landlords watch list approach to inform New Yorkers about bad actors and popular scams for DCWP's website. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. No, I think that's a great idea. I like to call it the shame list. Yeah, no, very good idea. And I think also Hilda Lin's point of really advertising and letting folks know, not only can claims result in positive response to the community, but that we are there doing that work is really important, to send the message that we are standing with people and we're standing against these fraudulent issues. I also just thank you. I think the minimum number of investigations is definitely something we should pursue, because as you saw, the agency seems to have a slept dash response. So thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much. And I'll just say, you know, I think that they do an incredible job at being responsive to, to complaints when they get them.
Yeah.
But if we're, if we're relying on people to come forward despite the stigma, despite the risks, we're never really going to address this issue in its full form. So would highly recommend a minimal number.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. Certainly not, not to say that they're not doing anything, but they are responding. But there is a serious shame that is connected to the experience of, of having been victimized by fraudsters that I don't think we discussed at all. We should have discussed how we address the shame and stigma around that. But these are all interim important measures that we should be pursuing, including the legislation. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good mon, good morning, good afternoon, sorry, members of the Council. My name is Natalia Núñez Baragán. I'm the Senior Manager of Membership and Capacity Building at Immigrant Arc. Immigrant Arc is a coalition of over eighty legal services providers delivering service across the New York State. Our mission is to increase access to legal justice and legal counsel for immigrants, New Yorkers, by mobilizing legal service provider and addressing systemic barriers to justice. Immigrant Arc applauds the New York City Council's work to combat immigration services fraud, whereby unscrupulous individuals who are neither licensed attorneys or accredited representatives. This prey, um, sorry, this prey upon those needing legitimate legal services by misrepresenting the nature of service they are qualified to provide. Today, our immigrant communities are under unprecedented attack, threats that weaken both our cities and its economy. We have witnessed indiscriminate enforcement, illegal detentions, and racial profiling with arbitrary quotas that mandating that the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, officers make seventy-five enforcement arrests per day. President Trump has ordered immigration authorities to detain individuals, and quote, "to the fullest extent possible." This significantly increased the number of people held in ICE and Customs and Border Protection. These facilities, the government experts and federal courts has previously deemed as barbaric and unconstitutional. All these creates conditions that are ripe for the proliferation of immigration service fraud. IAC members see the consequence of notary fraud firsthand. And I'm bringing an example of one of our members. The illegal project is currently serving two clients who has previous scam by a man named Fernando Aguilar, who has charged these two victims around six thousand dollars and thirteen thousand dollars, just to file an asylum application with a scam that brings biometrics appointments and a genuine letter that, from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. All these examples demonstrate the kind of fraud that victims might face at this moment. Our recommendation from IAC, and I'm, you can see it more in the summation of the testimony, we want to expand and promote community resources for education. I think that's the first thing that we need to promote, education for all our services providers, like pages like Immigrant Help New York, that we have a different language access and community face, and Know Your Rights, on how to introduce when ICE detention comes to you. The AVA's Commission of Immigration has stated a fight notary fraud, and fight notary fraud, as does the American Immigration Lawyers Association, that I also cited on the document. We also want to expand public funded for legal representation, because this is the bare minimum that we could do for our immigrants in New York. Expand and have legal, free access to legal representation. I also, I also want to note that Immigrant Arc is part of protecting immigrant New Yorkers, known as a teen, Pini Force, Pinitas Force, which has, which was created in 2013, and strengthened the enforcement's against unauthorized practice of immigration law, and is led by NYC, New York State Attorney General Office, District Attorney's Offices, local government Consumer Affairs Department, and different federal agencies. We invite other organizations to join and keep this initiative alive in this moment that we need it more than ever. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Natalia, for all your work and recommendations. We appreciate your testimony.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo- Buenas tardes. Me llamo Cristian. No uso mi apellido por, por, por proteger mi identidad.
Good afternoon. My name is Christian. I am not using my last name to protect my identity.
Estoy aquí para hablar sobre cómo fui defraudado por alguien que decía ser abogada.
I'm here to talk about how I was defrauded by someone who said she was my attorney.
Después de llegar a Estados Unidos, a la ciudad de Nueva York, estaba desesperado por encontrar a alguien que me ayudara a solicitar asilo.
After I came to the U.S. and New York City, I was desperate to find someone to help me file for asylum.
Encontré a alguien en Facebook que me dijo ser abogada.
And I found someone on Facebook who said she was an attorney.
Hablamos por WhatsApp y me dijo que podía ayudarme.
She, we talked on Fa, in WhatsApp and she said she could help me.
Más tarde me envió instrucciones sobre cómo pagarle mediante transferencia bancaria.
She later sent me the instructions on how to transfer money.
Le pagué un total de mil quinientos setenta dólares.
And I paid her a total of a thousand five hundred seventy dollars.
Le envié una copia de mi, me envió una copia de la solicitud de asilo y me dijo que estaba ya presentada.
She sent me a copy of my asylum application and said that it had been submitted.
Luego me indicó que participar en una videollamada para la audiencia de la Corte de Emigración.
And she later asked me to appear on a video call for an immigration court hearing.
Recuerdo que me dijo que vestiera formalmente.
I remember she asked me to dress formally.
Me presenté a la audiencia por Google Meet.
I appeared at the hearing by Google Meets.
Mi abogado estuvo ahí virtualmente y la jueza vestía una toga negra y me habló en español.
My attorney appeared virtually and I remember the judge wearing a black robe. And she, okay, continua.
Y al final la jueza me dijo que tenía ocho días para pagar un poco, un poco más de cinco mil dólares.
And the judge who spoke Spanish to me, asked me, told me that I had eight days to pay a little over five thousand dollars.
Si no pagaba dentro de ese plazo, debería unos veinticinco mil dólares.
And that I, if I didn't pay at that time, I would owe twenty-five thousand dollars.
El juez, el juez me indicó que debía colaborar con el abogado para pagar.
The judge told me that I should work with my attorney in order to pay this.
Este era el primer abogado con el que trabajaba y no tenía ni idea de lo, ni idea de lo que, nada de esto fuera inusual.
This was the first time I was working with an attorney, so I had no idea this was unusual.
Fue solo por, porque trabajé con un estudiante de derecho que me acompañaron durante la audiencia, que supe que ellos, que el juez de la Corte de Emigración no me debería haberme cobrado nada y que mi abogado proble, problemamente me estaba engañando para que pagara.
This I only learned because I was working with law school students who sat with me during the hearing and then informed me that the immigration court judge should not have been charging me any money and that my attorney was probably tricking me into paying this money.
También me dijeron que la solicitud de asilo y el acuse de recibo que me dio el abogado parecían falsos.
They also told me the asylum application and the receipt notice looked fake.
No leo inglés, así que no tenía idea.
So I had no idea because I can't read in English.
Me asusté cuando los estudiantes me dijeron que me habían estafado.
I got scared when the students told me I had been defrauded.
No estoy seguro si, si es, si este abogado era abogado de verdad.
I'm not even sure if this attorney was a real attorney.
Esto está mal. Debería darse información a los migrantes sobre cómo protegerse de este tipo de fraude.
This is wrong and there should be information given to immigrants to be able to protect ourselves against fraud.
Afortunadamente ahora estoy trabajando con un abogado de la Sociedad de Asistencia Legal.
And thankfully, I'm now working with an attorney at the Legal Aid Society.
Otros migrantes están siendo defraudados como yo.
Other immigrants are being defrauded like me.
Y en estos tiempos los, los migrantes tienen miedo de decir algo sobre los, sus derechos y cómo deben ser tratados de una manera justa en este país.
And in this time, immigrants are just afraid of saying anything about their rights or how they should be treated fairly in this country.
Gracias por, por permitirme hablar.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Muchísimas gracias por su testimonio y sinceramente lamento su experiencia. Esto es injusto y no debe de pasar. Vamos a estar trabajando para, para proteger a los inmigrantes de nuestra ciudad y bueno, lamento mucho. Estoy contenta que he encontrado la- Estoy contenta que he encontrado la Sociedad de Ayuda Legal, que son abogados muy buenos.
My name is Deborah Lee, and I'm the attorney in charge of the Immigration Law Unit, the Legal Aid Society. Thank you for this opportunity and the opportunity to testify. I'm testifying today alongside Cristian. We are not including his name to protect his identity. Non-citizens across this country and in New York City are living under siege in this current, under this current federal administration with a constant prospect of detention and deportation. Our federal government can now expel non-citizens and perhaps also U.S. citizens to a country where they have no lawful status, to a prison there for an indefinite sentence, and can do this without regard for court orders and to provide these people due process. Our government is also encouraging the dismissal of asylum claims because initially filed applications, including those by unrepresented individuals, are not deemed sufficiently legally detailed. And our government is using the Internal Revenue Service to hunt down immigrants and to cancel lawfully obtained social security numbers to force non-citizens to live in fear and go underground. For these reasons, as well as over four, two hundred and forty-three policy actions by this administration, non-citizens are at high risk of being a victim of immigration services fraud. Unscrupulous attorneys and non-attorneys can and will use this climate of fear to further exploit non-citizens who are desperate for any help to navigate our increasingly hostile immigration legal system. With the dearth of immigration legal service providers, non-citizens often find themselves paying for immigration legal help that they cannot afford. At Legal Aid, we have heard repeated accounts of clients like Cristian who have been defrauded in order to take their money. We need the city to invest more in immigration legal services for non-citizen New Yorkers, as well as provide robust community education efforts to investigate fraud-related crimes. Thank you for the opportunity to appear today.
Thank you, thank you so much for all the work that you are doing and your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, please begin.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Hannah Strauss, and I'm the supervising attorney of the Immigration Court Help Desk and the Family Group Legal Orientation Program at Catholic Charities Community Services. Each year, our programs, ICH and FGLOP, serve thousands of unrepresented immigrants. We provide critical education and guidance on deportation proceedings and potential forms of immigration relief as well as application assistance. We are uniquely situated within the immigration courts, and we provide first-come, first-served consultations, so we find that we're often the first free attorneys that people are able to speak to about their immigration cases. Unfortunately, today marks the final day of both ICH and FGLOP, as the federal government has chosen to terminate our contracts as of midnight tonight. Still, Catholic Charities remains deeply committed to serving New York's immigrant community through our broader legal services. Because of our wide reach, Catholic Charities regularly hears from immigrants who have been the victims of fraud. We have seen many heartbreaking examples that are echoed through the panelists who have already spoken today, including, we have seen notarios who charge fees to complete asylum applications or other types of immigration applications, only to file them incorrectly with incorrect information or not at all. Often, the immigrant is unaware that the notario is unable to provide legal advice or represent them in their court proceedings. We have also seen scammers posing as immigration attorneys, tricking migrants into believing that they have applied for asylum, as the panelists spoke about, by issuing fake notices and even fabricating entire virtual court hearings. This causes not just financial loss, but also serious harm to legitimate cases where these individuals are attending fake hearings instead of their government-scheduled hearings. We've also seen many instances of these ten-year visa schemes, where immigrants are misled into filing baseless applications that lead to the immigrant being placed into removal proceedings. We've also seen immigration service providers who charge outrageous fees for asylum applications and tie the work to installment payments. They often then abandon those cases when the individual is no longer able to pay and the individual is left with no application filed and the money lost. Catholic Charities strongly supports, ensures 980 and 205, currently under consideration, which aim to increase penalties for fraudulent practitioners and improve fraud prevention and reporting. These measures are essential to preventing, protecting our most vulnerable neighbors from life-altering harm. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Fallonati. I'm the Assistant Director of Immigrant and DV Services at NIMIC. So I don't want to be redundant with, with my other peers and colleagues who have testified. I do want to highlight a very common practice we see as an immigration service provider. Instances of fraud range from the extravagant, which a gentleman just presented, but all too often, they're very similar and simplistic schemes. I know the, the Consumer Protection Department, you know, I, I have faith that they're doing good work, but there should be many, many more complaints being filed in a city of this size. To illustrate, a client's promised employment authorization and path to getting a green card. For anyone who's been surviving or supporting a family without status for years or decades even, this is an invaluable proposition, no matter the cost. As we talked about, the attorney or notario prepares an application that they know will never be approved. They rush the client through the process, don't ask any relevant questions, and have them sign without explaining. As mentioned in this hearing, we frequently see, are seeing now fraudulent violence against Women Act applications with bogus claims of domestic violence that the, that the victim has not even been asked about. There's also, of course, phony asylum claims for people who have been here for, for years or decades, when a claim normally needs to be filed within one year. The scam relies on the fact that victims become eligible for a temporary work card while the app is pending. Therefore, someone with a totally and facially baseless app will receive an employment card by default. This is very powerful in inducing and propagating fraud, because it's in their hands. They can see progress on their case, but they don't understand that the government issues these temporarily, and that has nothing to do with the validity of the case. It is very, it's a very insidious problem to educate people on. We are, we are in favor of both measures, but also increased legal funding, because the best way to explain to someone that they should not seek out a bad actor, that they shouldn't file anything, is a one-on-one conversation, where you establish trust with the client, and tell them that unfortunately, there's nothing for them, but we find ourselves warning people more and more, like, please, do not waste money. It will get you in trouble, and it will just leave you with thousands of dollars poor. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Brewer has a question.
Thank you very much for both. NIMIC and Catholic Charities are the best. Catholic Charities, so with that cut in funding, what's Montina Sullivan going to do to keep people doing the same work, if anything?
That's a great question. Right now, we're searching for additional funding. I think we've applied for funding from the city, we've applied for foundation funding, and we're hoping to hear back, so that we can keep our staff, keep our team together, and keep doing the work that we are doing now.
What kind of money are you looking for? What was the cut approximately?
It was a 1.2 million was our contract for ICH and FGLOP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both for coming today and testifying. And our last in-person panel, before we go to Zoom, is Sharon Brown and Raul Rivera. If you could please come down. As was stated by my co-chair, there is actually no video recording, but you can submit transcripts of the recording to the sergeant-at-arms. Sorry, I can't hear you.
We're not recorded from the table. We've been told many times. We understand it.
Is that, so that's permitted? Okay, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Do you want to?
Only, only from the witness table.
Okay. Did one of you want to begin?
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Before I begin, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go, defend Israel, and happy holy week. For immigration, to combat fraud, we need to know who people are. There should be a fraud, immigration fraud database created of illegals who cross the border when we catch them. And we, we also should have, when people cross the border, we should have videos and we should also have pictures taken at the border, so we can identify who it is, and put out the videos and put out the pictures, so that someone might be able to identify who they are, what country they come from, or whatever. We should not have the immigrants as the only one that are getting card, cash cards, and all of these different things. It should be for our veterans, our military homeless, and those who defended our country. We do want to take care of the immigrants who come here, who need sanctuary, whether they cross the border or not, but we need to know who they are. And when they do get here and they actually need sanctuary, we need to make sure that we help them with funding or whatever it is they need. When we actually determine they need our help, their circumstances in their country or something going on that they need sanctuary, we will actually afford that to them. But for those who are abusing it and coming across, we need to make sure that we have a database and we can get them out of the country. We need to make sure the people that are crossing the border weren't returning from being trafficked or something like that. So we definitely need a database, because some people that are crossing the borders may have started out as Americans younger or something like that. We just need to know who they are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alexa Aviles, Chair of the Immigration Committee. Your actions have raised serious concerns about your commitment to representing the interests of American citizens and native New Yorkers. Specifically, your defense of individuals like Mahmoud Khalil, a known Hamas sympathizer, is alarming. As a representative of District 38, pri, your, District 38, your primary responsibility is to serve the people of New York City. Instead, your actions seem to prioritize the interests of certain groups like probono.net over the, over those, over those of your constituents. Key concerns: lack of representation. Your defense of Hamas sympathizers suggests you're not prioritizing the safety and well-being of American citizens and native New Yorkers. Conflict of interest: your actions may be seen as conflicting with the interests of the community you serve, particularly given the role as Chair of the Immigration Committee. Questionable alliances: your association with individuals or groups perceived as sympathetic to Hamas raised questions about your allegiances, commitment to the people of New York City. Call to action: reevaluate your priorities. We urge you to reassess your priorities and ensure that your actions align with the interests of your constituents. Transparency and accountability: provide transparency regarding your association and actions, and be held accountable for your decisions as a representative. Serve the community: focus on serving the people of District 38 and New York City rather than the special interest groups. Conclusion: As a council member, your role is to serve the people, not special interest groups. Your actions have raised serious concern, and it's essential to address these concerns promptly. Thank you to our 72nd United States Secretary of State, Marco Rubio, for sending back Mahou Khalil back to where he belongs. Thank you so much.
Completely off-topic, moving on. Next, we're going to have Christopher Leon Johnson. If you cannot decorum in the court, in the chamber, and if you cannot do that, you can be dismissed. Mr. Johnson?
Hello, Chair Aviles. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I came from housing, about security guards. While at the same time, about to say about the unions, but that's a different story. And by the, by the way, your unions are part of the reason that the immigration frauds are happening, because what happens is some of these immigration, these immigration lawyers fund these unions behind, under the table. And what happens is that these politicians are scared of these unions, so they, they're empowered to do what they want. They're empowered to do what they want, and that's what happens with these immigration lawyers. At the same time that the city council needs to be more in government and really do their job in themselves as council members, as council members, not outsourcing this type of stuff to the nonprofits, that you'd be surprised at getting money from these same immigration lawyers, so-called immigration lawyers, immigration services, to educate the people about what's a real immigration lawyer, what's, what's your rights as an immigrant, what you, what services you need to get, what services you can get as an immigrant, how much you got to pay. The government, the, the city council needs to design a, a unit within the city council to designate certain nonprofits that are eligible to do immigration services for constituents that's coming over this, that's coming from the border. Let's keep that 100%. But like I said, everybody knows a lot of fraud in this city, because there's a lot of lawyers that they see this as a lot, they, they know the process of getting, getting a green card, or getting a visa, or getting a worker's, like a work permit, like a worker's, worker's permit, and they know what you, they know every loophole, every, every exploitive loophole. But until these city council members here disassociate themselves from these, these so-called lawyers and these advocates, nothing's going to change here. So that's all I got to say. Thank you, and enjoy your day.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And next, we will move to on virtual, on Zoom, we'll call Alice Davis and Stephanie Rovine.
You may begin.
Hi. Good afternoon, Committee Chairs Aviles and Menon, and members of the Committee on Immigration and Consumer Worker Protection. Thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding Bills 205 and 980. My name is Alice Davis, and I'm the Deputy Director at Catholic Migration Services. Catholic Migration Services provides free legal services and information to low-income New York City residents in three main areas: immigration, workers' rights, and housing. For over fifty years, our immigration unit has provided both removal defense and affirmative legal assistance to immigrants residing in New York City. More recently, our Pro Se Plus team, which was created a few years ago, has worked with unrepresented asylum seekers with legal orientations, screenings, triage, and application assistance. To review some of what some of the other providers have said, the immigration process is often very long and expensive and complicated. And in recent years, the availability of quality and affordable immigration legal services has become very scarce. As a result, we are seeing that many of our immigrant clients have turned to notarios who falsely advertise immigration legal services, even though they have no legal training or not authorized to perform some of these services. We applaud the city council for taking measures to protect New York City immigrant populations from fraudulent immigration services providers, and we feel that it is critical at this time to implement these additional protections. We have seen instances of providers who hold themselves out as nonprofits but have charged exorbitant fees to prepare asylum applications. On many occasions, we have cleaned up and corrected the mistakes of notarios, including the use of incorrect applications and the submissions of applications to incorrect government offices. And we have found that, as in essence, our immigration team is spending inordinate amount of time.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Rovine.
You may begin.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I'm the Healing Center's Program and Development Director. It's an honor to be here today with so many people doing such important work on behalf of the community that we're all working with. And I'm here to just speak briefly about the importance of continued funding for the Healing Center during such a critical and scary time. The Healing Center's been a pillar of hope and strength to families and survivors of gender-based violence for 25 years, with a specialty in working with immigrants. gender-based violence for 25 years with a specialty in working with immigrant survivors. And we walk with survivors along diverse dimensions of their lives, including their immigration processes. We're taking a lot of care at this time to refer to accurate sources, to credible lawyers, and to protect our participants not only from threats by outside scammers, but also by intimate partners and people who know them well and understand how to capitalize on fears and misinformation. And we wanted to speak as well to the need for continued city council support. It's a very scary time for nonprofits to be so heavily dependent on federal funding. We've been able to radically expand our programming throughout the past two years with federal funds, and we're seeing our partners who support immigrant communities, who promote accurate information, and who protect people against being frauded and scammed, suddenly losing funding with three days of notice. This is one of the most important inflection points in our history, and we're more dependent on city council funding than we've ever been. And we're completely committed to not allowing these events to hinder or prevent our mission of serving survivors of gender-based violence for 25 years. And we work with survivors who are in the midst of going through immigration processes and securing at the same time orders of protection, working through the most vulnerable things that have happened to them in supportive counseling, or who are just starting to turn to us now after being alone and isolated for years and years and have never turned to someone before.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephanie, for your testimony and your work. We have now heard from everyone who signed up to testify. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom and a member of our staff will call on you in the order of hands raised. I will now read the names of those who've registered to testify but who have not yet filled out a witness slip or appeared on Zoom. Lurki Ho and William Betancourt. Seeing no one else, I would like to note again that written testimony will be reviewed in full by the committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And with that, this hearing is come to a close.